Ready to get started?
Can you get the public comment?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Um, all right, I'm ready, right? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
It's traffic.
No, we just don't need that projector.
Yeah, we're trying to turn it off. So, we just see what I can.
It's, it's still stuck on talking. And then you have to do the arrow over and hit okay.
Okay, so Sean Parr. Yeah, awesome. You got the timer, you got the timer, right? Hey, Sean.
Good morning. My name is Sean Parr, I'm on the Manchester School Board where I chair the Education Legislation Committee. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the Manchester School Board, which has authorized me to express our opposition to the proposed changes to New Hampshire's minimum standards for public education. We, as a board, have expressed our concerns several times via letters, listening sessions, and in person. The proposed three oh six revisions threaten to undermine the education all our students deserve. To begin with, the State Board of Education has ignored our concerns and those of hundreds of constituents who have also participated in listening sessions across the state. In spite of reaching a consensus draft version that accounted for these concerns and had the support of many education stakeholders, the State Board has chosen to accept a version that lacks broad public support. The most substantive and concerning revisions remain in the document. It's time to listen to our educators, school boards, and citizens. Strengthening our public schools has broad public support. Providing the best education for all students has broad public support. These are the nonpartisan values that should be guiding the revision of our minimum standards. Instead, the changes, if implemented, will significantly weaken public education in New Hampshire, lowering standards. In fact, the proposed three oh six revisions remove requirements that protect our students, such as class size maximums, teacher certification, differentiated instruction, and basic instructional standards. The proposed revisions also weaken the purpose and structure of schools as well as lowering the expectations for all students. And the revisions subvert the authority of local school boards. Finally, these revisions threaten to hurt our students by redefining and watering down what is considered an essential, required, and adequate education in New Hampshire. We want to maintain high standards, high expectations for our students' learning. We want to close learning gaps from the pandemic, raise graduation rates, raise test scores. We want to ensure all students have access to the best education possible. But these three oh six revisions will worsen inequities across the state because weakening minimum standards weakens what we can, what is considered inadequate education. And weakening what how we view adequacy will significantly reduce the funding that public school districts qualify for. By lowering standards and reducing requirements and expectations, the state would disavow its obligation to adequately fund public schools. And this has serious implications for the future of public education in New Hampshire. Even with so many voices speaking out against these revisions, I personally remain skeptical that you will adjust course. The onus is on you to revise the Ed three oh sixes in a way that incorporates the feedback we have offered. Until then, the only conclusion that remains is that this process of listening forums, working groups, consultants, and public hearings has all been for show. Until then, we can only conclude that you do not want to ensure the best education for all New Hampshire students. Until then, we have to doubt your commitment to your mission, to quote, "ensure that every individual acquires the skills and knowledge to succeed."
Thank you. Good timing.
He's perfect on it.
Awesome.
Did you submit your?
I've written, I can, I will.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, forgot to remember it. Yes, okay. Patricia Eno from Salem. And Linda Jones is on deck.
Good morning. I am here to speak about the lack of action that I see proposed from the school board with regards to the special education audit of ninety some plus pages. I was one of the parents that fought for this audit and really don't appreciate the amount that it seems to be being ignored. The school board seems to think that everything's fine, that we really don't need to follow federal law, state law, state rules. Volunteers from the Parent Information Center appear to be the equivalent of the school board's hiring law firms even before there's any action against them. So a preemptive, let's have this person come to the, let's have this lawyer come to the meeting and fight against this special needs student's rights. It's inappropriate. You have a right to defend yourself against an action. But if there's no action before you to defend against just a parent asking a question or attending an IEP meeting, wanting an education for their child, I feel that there is no right for the school boards to be getting these consent agreements. It is not, as was said in the meeting on Tuesday, a one-to-one agreement. It's one against, it's the school board independently drawing it up after a parent has won one amount of, one little piece of their special education program before the written prior notice that the parent was involved in. The school board is tacking on, the school board and the attorney is tacking on for all eternity. The parent and the child cannot come against them. This was what was done to, to me and what was proposed to my son. I could not go to the school board after my son turned eighteen and say, and fight, yet they wanted to prevent him from doing so after he turned eighteen years old. That was his fight. And legally, I would not have had the right to fight for him without getting guardianship, which he did not need at eighteen. So I bypassed the State Department of Education because I saw how awful it was, and I went to Superior Court. And I cannot say that I won. But the school board in Salem cut me a check for the exact amount I wanted without any consent agreement because I was robbed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Linda Jones, yes, cider, okay. And then Kate Shear, you're on deck.
Good morning. Hi, everyone. My name is Linda Jones. I have a seven-year-old autistic daughter in elementary school in Manchester School District. Two years ago, my daughter attended, excuse me, I have a cold. My daughter attended a Manchester Elementary School for kindergarten. That year, I had noticed some of her behaviors seemed off. I asked the school for their input. And they insisted that she was totally typical child despite the fact that she was impulsive, hyperactive, struggling to write, struggling to express herself, and struggling to focus. Towards the end of that school year, she started having severe meltdowns at home that lasted for hours. And then in that September, I chose to homeschool her. In February twenty twenty-three, she received a diagnosis of autism. After about eight months of homeschooling, I enrolled her in a charter school, which she began on May first of twenty twenty-three. Shortly after that, she began having some trouble at school, so I made the referral to special education. Before the disposition of referral meeting, the district asked me to bring my daughter in for a screening. At the time, I didn't understand what that meant, that that was not the same as a formal evaluation. On June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, the disposition of referral meeting was held, and the district declined to fully evaluate my daughter based on those informal screenings. I didn't know that I could disagree with that decision. However, they did evaluate her in the areas of academics and social-emotional. Despite being in the clinically significant range for most of the items on social-emotional status, on August ninth, twenty twenty-three, the district found my daughter ineligible for a special education. They offered her a five oh four plan. Soon after the school year began, behaviors began escalating. She was aggressive and eloping, it was just a nightmare all around. I requested another meeting with the district, and on September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, I met with them, and they just refused to budge at all, even though they acknowledged that things were getting worse and not better with the five oh four plan. They still did not find her eligible. At that point, I was totally lost what to do next because it was clear to everyone that she needed help, and they were just not budging. Then, on January eighth, two thousand twenty-four, this year, a friend suggested that I file a complaint with the department. So I did that, and then the same day, I had another meeting with the district. No new information was presented at all. Nothing had changed from September to January. But for some reason, at that meeting, they now found her eligible. This past February, for charter school, she was attending closed down, and she's now attending another elementary school in the district. She's been given an IEP, however, it's very basic and has minimal support. So this is an ongoing battle for me. All this being said, I consider my daughter one of the lucky ones. If I had not had access to support and information outside of the district, my daughter might never have gotten an IEP at all. And I don't know if she would be able to attend school at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you come up to your daughter?
Thank you.
Okay, Kate.
Hi, I'm Kate Shear, and I'm a resident of Derry, New Hampshire. I'm also here to talk about the March twenty twenty-four audit that came out regarding the special ed implementation process. I know many things were found on the state level that could use improvement. And my point of speaking today is to bring awareness to what the problems are at the local level. And I urge the board to consider that a local-level audit is very important. My son, I can, as an example, is, I made a referral for a child find at age five. This was January of twenty twenty-three. It took until the, the district and the state both couldn't figure out who was responsible for child find because the, the law in New Hampshire didn't cover exactly that. So I had to refer back to federal guidelines. It took me finding that information out from OSAT myself and bringing that to both the district and the state. Then, until March of twenty twenty-three, I didn't even get presented with evaluation. So that's three months already that has not, has been failed. Then they found him ineligible, ineligible for special education in June. And I asked the district to pay for independent educational evaluations. I disagreed as well, his, his teachers disagreed that he should have been eligible for special education. I was never discussed what dispute resolution options were available. I had received my procedural safeguards. Any information was just good luck. And I then had these independent evaluations done. It took until September, and then magically, my son is found eligible for special education. So the point is, is that is nine months. The state complaint process is one year. So if I hadn't been very educated to get to that process, these complaints aren't even reaching the state level. The children that are being missed in the child find process is at the local level. It's, they're not following IDEA. Children are being missed, and it's under the radar. This is, it's very much district level is saying to parents, either this is the way it's done, it's not, this is the way we've always done it. It's not, IDEA was made to protect our children with disabilities. And it's, it's not being done at the local level. I, I understand the state has many concerns from this audit, but we're still not reaching the, the problem within all these districts. And I hope that that can be readdressed. And my time is up.
Thank you.
My time is up.
Thank you. He is still not in school. We finally agreed on a placement, and they don't actually have a spot at the placement that they suggested.
Thank you so much for sharing.
Okay, Adrian, you all. Adrian? Can somebody just check in the hallway out there? Is Adrian out there? Call Adrian?
I think he may have been, probably had to sign in, or put a comment when he's not commenting.
Okay, he doesn't have to sign in, okay. All righty. Okay, that's it? All right. Thank you so much, everybody. Uh, conditional approval response for Learn Everywhere program, Julie.
Good morning. Um, Julie Shea, Administrator Rules Coordinator, and I have with me.
Save a call to Administrator Education, please.
Um, and so we have the conditional approval response for ED fourteen hundred, which is Learn Everywhere. This was on the consent agenda at the last Joe Carr meeting. There were very few edits that needed to be made, and all of them that were made were passed without any sort of questioning. I don't know if you guys have any questions on it? Okay, otherwise, we will send the conditional approval over to them, and then, once we get it back, we'll bring it up later in the meeting.
Okay.
I motion to approve the conditional approval response for ED fourteen hundred regarding Learn Everywhere.
Sir.
Oh, David.
Aye.
Great, that's it for now, thank you.
All right, S A U Spotlight.
All right.
All right.
Good morning. I'm gonna, I am gonna actually step aside because it's about the kids. But I wanted to just note that you're leading two future leaders of not only New Hampshire, but probably America.
The world.
And you'll see, you'll see why pretty quickly. Noah Afram and Phil Dappas are here to speak for Hopkins, so thank you, guys.
Hopkins. Hopkins. Hopkins in New Hampshire, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, we have a slide.
Yes, um, hold on one minute, let me just share my screen, and we'll get this going.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks for being here. There it is. Hopkins High School. We wanted a title that Hopkins is awesome, but Superintendent Flynn said, uh, let's, let's keep it professional.
That's the name of the town, though, I can tell you.
Okay, you can go to the next slide.
Yeah, so about us, Flo and I ran for the Student Representative for the School Board position after our freshman year. Previous, previously, we were in student government, but we thought we wanted a more hands-on role of actually like, in learning about how schools are run, how the district runs. And so we ran for the, um, School Board position. We, we won, and so we've been serving on it, um, our sophomore year, our junior year, and we plan to continue to serve on it till our senior year.
Yeah, and that's why we're here. We work with, uh, Mr. Flynn a lot, he's our superintendent, and we've gotten to join subcommittees of the school board, help write policy, visited elementary schools, and we've done some more leadership stuff that we'll talk about in the other slides, but it's been great, it's been very interesting.
Yeah, we've learned, we've learned a ton, so that's been awesome. All right, so at Hopkins, we have a brand-new club. It's called Student-Led Ethical Discussions at Hopkins, and we call it SLED. It was brought to us by a new teacher, a new social studies teacher. And about forty-five members are in the club, which at Hopkins, that makes up a huge percentage. I'm pretty sure almost twenty-five percent of students have at least attended one meeting, which is fantastic.
Yeah, so for the actual club, we have some like bi-weekly meetings, where we have discussions about different topics in society, pretty controversial topics usually, like AI, the ethics of being rich, honesty, cheating, cancel culture. It's totally student-run, me and, and our, are some of the leaders of it. And there's also like great opportunities to go outside of school and like use these skills that we get. And so these pictures are us at an ethics bowl at St. Anselm, and you basically present an ethical argument. I think it's been a really great adventure at school.
It's been, yeah, it's been fantastic.
We didn't win the ethics.
Yeah, we didn't win, of course. Doesn't mean you're not ethical. But we, oh, we also have, back to the, uh, SLED. We also do have people who come in who have worked in different industries to present on ethical topics. So we have, earlier this year, we had a person who presented on fast fashion. And how is that, if it's ethical, to get, if it's not, and, um, it was really interesting, students had, were really engaged in it, really participated.
And our, our next Ethics Lab is about teaching history and education.
Yeah.
Really interesting.
And you get pizza if you come to it, so it's a win-win.
Okay, you can go to the next one. Uh, another awesome club that we have at our school is the Environmental Action Club, uh, which I've been pretty involved with, and it was started completely by students in twenty eighteen to make the high school more sustainable. And since then, there's been a number of projects that have happened. On the screen here, there's the first pictures of us composting. So we set up this little area in the cafeteria to like help students sort their waste. We took audits of the stuff that we're throwing away to see how we could reduce it. And everything here has been completely funded by grants, which were written by kids in the club.
You wrote your own grants?
Yeah, yeah, we wrote the grants, yeah, it was a little. And we, we just got another grant to see if we can implement metal silverware in the cafeteria. So we're looking to like work with cafeteria staff to do that. And this also has a bunch of student involvement, there's about thirty regular members with more in and out. Okay, so another, this is a sort of a curricular opportunity that we wanted to highlight, which is, uh, just one of many, but for the upperclassmen in English classes, which is awesome, uh, we have to do this blog post assignment. And this is just one example of, of many of the blog posts. Blog posts are sort of like an opportunity for students to choose a book and then write sort of informally about what they took away from that book. And it's a really great chance, I don't, I've never had an assignment like this where you get to really think about what you're reading and then learn how to communicate it with other people. Because the second part of the assignment is that we read our classmates' blogs and then comment on them, and it just really encourages like critical thinking, and it's always an interesting topic.
Yeah, it's been fantastic.
Yeah, we're actually missing that class to be here right now. But don't worry, we'll be writing the blogs.
Yeah, we'll be writing the blog.
Can I interrupt? Linda, do you have a lot of people who participate?
It's everyone in, yeah, so in the junior and senior, yeah, it's mandatory. But in the junior and senior classes, everyone has to write a, I think it's four blogs per, per like unit. Students love it, uh, which is kind of surprising because it's, it's a writing assignment. But students love it, you get to pick your own book, you critically think.
You get a few questions for every post, so it's, it's sort of a theme, but it's also sort of just your own thoughts on the book.
Yeah, and so the questions can range from like something super simple, yeah, like author style to like.
Or like message and importance in society, so.
And then you respond to the comments, so it's, it's a great assignment, it really involves critical, critical thinking. Yeah, students love it, yeah. All right, so we have a class at Hopkins called Careers, where you basically learn about different pathways after college. And in this class, we had a, a company called, come in, Bio Truck, or Army?
Army.
Army, Army. And, um, they have a, a Department of Education, different than you guys, but a Department of Education. And they come in and give lessons on the company and what they do. So their company is a, they, um.
Like manufacture organs?
Yeah.
Artificial.
Artificial organs, and, um, and so the assignment is basically, they give you a, they're, they, they give you a bunch of lessons on how it works, how their company works. And then they give you a, an assignment where they say, design your own organ, come up with all, everything that would involve a company, basically. So the financials, advertising, distribution. And so it really exposes you to all different types of, um, pathways after college. And they also bring in guest speakers, so the CFO of, um, Army came in, or zoomed in and gave us a, uh, like a little, a little spiel, and it, it was, it was fantastic.
Yeah, and on the slide here, you can see two examples, these are the finalists for our, um, for the whole school this year. On the left, there's, that's called Rupture Relief, and they made, uh, artificial spleens for people out of sheep's spleens, actually, for people who didn't have a spleen. And then on the right, this is my group, it's called BioBlood, and it was creating artificial blood for transfusions. The, the group on the left was.
And this is brand-new to Hopkins, and students have seemed to really
Yeah, it's been great.
Really enjoy it.
How much are your spleens? Just curious.
Probably pretty expensive, I would assume.
All right, so another required class that we have is civics, and everyone takes it as a senior. It's not really one of those classes, they're like, oh, I just have to take this class, it's required. Like, kids have a lot of fun in civics. As you can see here, the top two pictures are kids in a mock trial, which every high school participates in. And you have students as lawyers on defense prosecution, you have students as witnesses. And it's a great opportunity for everyone to actually like get a look at what the, the criminal justice system looks like.
And freshmen sit on the jury, so it involves all, all different age groups, I guess, are great.
Civics also has a lot of opportunities to get involved with like the community. Like, they're always required to go to one local meeting, so sometimes they come to our school board meeting. They're, they're all surprised by how long they are, but sometimes they enjoy them. Like, we had a presenter from New Hampshire School Funded Fairness Project, Zach Sheehan, at, uh, our last meeting or two meetings ago, and there were like ten or fifteen civics kids there, and they all, they were taking notes the whole time, and afterwards, they came up to me and now, and they're like, can we learn more about this? Like, this is so cool. So, um, Ms. Centros, the wonderful teacher of civics, arranged for the, for Zach to come into one of their civics classes and actually talk to them about what's happening in the state. So it's very current and relevant, and, uh, it's, I think it makes, it makes, uh, the students of Hopkins much better citizens when they graduate.
I would a hundred percent agree. So the last topic we're gonna cover is world language. At Hopkins, every student loves world language, which is kind of different from what I've heard. And so at Hopkins, we have an exchange program with the French and German language. So right now, actually, we have German students, do they go home today?
Yeah, they're leaving at three thirty today.
They're leaving at three thirty today, but they've been here for, I think, two weeks. And earlier in the year, we had French students, and it's, it's really cool to learn about different cultures through this.
We sent twenty kids, and they sent twenty kids. This is a picture of all the Germans and Americans that are part of the program last week at Alrodeo, so we do some fun, fun events together.
Yeah, so at Hopkins, we, um, we teach world language in a style called OWL, which stands for Organic World Language. And so basically, OWL is a way of teaching language the same way you learned your first language. So, for example, if you were sitting in a circle, the teacher will point to the, point to the, um, let's, if we're learning the word sun in Spanish, which is sol, she'll like point to the sky and say, sol. And then we have to basically critically think and be like, oh, she's talking about the sun, that's sol. And so it's, it's super engaging, kind of feels like, like elementary school again.
Yeah, we like, we spend a lot of time in circles.
It's a lot of conversational-based, and, um, it really works. So we took the, um, Apple exam pretty recently, um, which is the exam for the SEAL by literacy. And, uh, ninety-five percent of Spanish four-five students at Hopkins, which is my Spanish class, performed at an intermediate-high level, which is fantastic. Eighty-nine percent performed between intermediate, uh, high, or intermediate mid to intermediate high on the writing portion. And so it really does work, and it's, it's a fun, engaging way to learn a new language. And kids are, continue to sign up. We, I think we have twenty-seven kids signed up for the highest level of Spanish next year, which is, which is awesome. Yeah?
That's, that's our presentation.
Yeah, that's what's happening at Hopkins.
That sounds great, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're right, you're gonna be future leaders.
I love the ethical discussions that you're having and getting those controversial topics. I like that you're taking on challenging topics, I think that's really important. Can you just give us a sense of what that like? What, what is that like for students to take on stuff that can get the emotions running? what that like? What, what is that like for students to take on stuff that can get the emotions running pretty high? How do you handle people getting emotionally charged about these topics?
Yeah, so we have, um, we have five different mediators, basically. We call them leaders.
Yeah.
And they, they develop the questions, they think of the topics. And then their j- whole job, basically, yes, to participate and yes, give their opinion. But it's to make sure that everyone is talking respectfully to each other because I frankly, we don't, we don't.
Yeah, we're not.
I think in politics as a whole, in the United States, we don't do that.
Yeah.
And so that is base, that is what, um, our teacher, Mr. Callahan, brought this club to do. Was, they're like, yes, it's great to learn about ethical discussions, but.
And sometimes we get into arguments.
We, we do, we, we do, but, but that's learning.
And we, we tell everyone at the beginning of the club, like at the beginning of the year and at al- almost every meeting, we say, this is not a debate club. So like, you're not just trying to argue with someone, like if you're arguing with someone, you can say that. And the goal of every conversation is to find like common ground or to at least understand what other people's perspective is.
And I would say, yes, people do get emotionally charged up, but at the end of every discussion, um, we try to find a middle ground or we, we discuss.
Or at least learn something.
Yeah, and, and kids seem to love it and I think it's gonna be a hit at Hockington for a while.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
You're welcome. It's like you've got some great teachers.
You are. That was great. Okay, so we have um Christine Downing. Hey Christine. Some long-awaited Christine Downing.
Yeah.
I'm excited that you're here.
And I have yet another for you. Thank you, I brought last week's wickie. Oh, Christine, I'm getting it ready.
No problem, Angela.
Okay.
No worries.
Good God, that's.
What a great way to follow. I, I don't wanna say anything. I just wanna say, let's keep doing that and let's keep, you know, working in favor of those kids, right?
Right.
Uh, great examples there, I have to tell you. Some integration of logic and rhetoric in there.
Yeah.
You know, importance of our world languages, so I might highlight a little of, of those and come back to them for you. Uh, Christine Downing, uh educator, private citizen, volunteer facilitator, uh, Goshen, New Hampshire. Let me know when you're ready, Angela.
I'm ready whenever you are.
Okay. So Angela's got a few slides. You have my full report there as well. I'm just gonna try to highlight. It's been.
Great, but you're still gonna give us something at the end of the month too?
Yes, correct.
I just wanna make sure, I wanna like cut that off.
Correct, yes, yes, I'm, I'm in like this three phases approach right now.
I'm gonna call this the interim report, right, okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, yeah, it's, it's a lot to, to weed through, honestly. Um, so it's taken a little bit of time. I was telling some folks in the back of the room that uh I spent like the last couple of days going through the educator feedback and I successfully made it through four of the content sections. Um, but it's, it's taking a little bit of time. Um, so this is a preliminary, um, to get you um, your mindset kinda around, you know, what things came out of the educator review sessions.
Can I, can I table set for them? Cause I'm not sure, like I'm familiar with it, but maybe these folks aren't.
Yeah. Yeah, sure, go for it. Yeah.
So, um, you know, as, as part of the three oh six rules, uh, the back half of the rules was deals with a lot of the content areas. Um, what we felt like is we didn't have enough input relative to the content expertise. Um, and so Christine has been convening content experts to go through the back half of that rule and provide us with input, kind of in like four different categories. If I don't get these right, correct me.
I got them in the slides if you want.
Okay, so in four different categories that you're gonna see in a minute. Sorry about that, you know?
Yeah, no problem.
And so, and she's been meeting with.
Almost three hundred, two hundred ninety-six.
Okay, so a hundred. So lots of input into this and so, um, I just think it was important for them to understand the context.
Sure, yeah, and I, a couple of the slides will come to set that context.
Okay.
I, I just wanna know, I want you to know that the language I use in talking about these sections is called, I say the content sections. And that's really because it links back to that subcategory in the RSA around adequate education. You're gonna hear other people call them program components, program elements. I don't want you to get confused by that, that I'm just gonna call them content sections, cause to me, that's what they really are. They, they are defining content. Go ahead, Angela.
Okay, I didn't want to be moved there, so.
Oh, there we go. So just to get to, as the commissioner said, table set, kind of what went on.
Okay.
So we had nine full day sessions, um, and I went throughout the state, so I was at Hampton, New London, Amherst, Meredith and Gorham. Um, and basically, except for Gorham, Gorham we combined into one day. We, I had two days in these locations. They weren't always consecutive. For example, in Amherst, I had one day and then two weeks later, I was back there. Cause we tried, tried to take the twenty-one content sections and separate them and make them doable for teachers to come out of the classroom. That was one of the primary concerns is how do we educate our voice to the table when we know we have substitute shortages going on and coverage issues, right? And we don't um, wanna impact that as much as we can help. Oh.
Oh, 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 did I go too fast? Okay, sorry, sir.
Wait, just for just a second.
Yeah.
Um, when you went to the school, when you have, went to the school, did you have a lot of participation?
Yes, I did. Um, and I, and I did, um, actually, there was feedback like in the middle of registrations um, for some educators who were like, I can't get out of the class and would you be willing to do a Zoom on like a Saturday morning? So I actually ran a Zoom on a Saturday morning. Happened to be during one of our storms.
Yeah.
There was some concerns about power outages, but we made it happen. So I had two hundred and ninety-six educators across all the sessions. Some were, you know, lighter than others, like Amherst, I had almost sixty in a room at one time. A majority of them probably ranged from twenty-five to thirty-five. Some were a little lighter, maybe the, you know, upper teens, low twenties. But it varied based a lot on location, honestly. Um, the work, as the commissioner said, that I'm still working on is to actually give you guys the documents. So what happened as we went to each of the five, as I went to each of the five locations is we did this through a Google process. So like, I started in Hampton. So the Hampton group got to really start the Google Doc process first and then when I went to the next one, that group could look at theirs, add to it, adjust. So that's what I'm trying to synthesize right now, like what's the consensus across the groups?
Good idea.
Yeah, um, and so that's what's kind of taking and that's, I'm, I'm gonna work as quick as I can to get it and get it by the end of this month and literally give you like arts, here's the proposed language, like here's what they actually discussed and and, and you know, the exact words that they're suggesting, things like that. Thanks Angela, go ahead. So, this is the breakdown. So these were all the areas that were covered in the sessions that um I addressed. I put in bold those that had over ten educators complete the reviews. So you can see the heavy hit items. The other areas were lighter in the sense that sometimes it was like six or seven or eight in that group as they were spread out. In a couple of locations, I might only have one or two at that session, but then I'd pick up maybe two or three at another session, right? So you can see the areas. You know, I am gonna talk about what we called the buckets when we had a conversation. So I did flag, because one of our conversations was about pointing to the academic standards in support of the rules. Um, and one of our conversations that I had with the commissioner was, well, we have some areas that don't have academic standards. So I flagged those because as I developed, and I'm happy to share the full Google folder if you all wanna see everything that we use for resources with all of you. But I flagged those areas and you can see we have twelve out of our twenty-one content sections actually don't have academic standards we can point to, okay? So that was important in the development of the rules.
Are there federal standards?
There are, there are some nationals, yep. And that, those got drawn in and you'll see those in some of the recaps I give you.
And, and, Christine, can I just step in and ask your opinion on this? Cause you're right, we, we don't write standards for every single subject.
Right.
Um, I don't know how much the board could actually do with all the other rulemaking we have to do in, in doing that, but like how useful would it be in some of these areas to have state standards?
This is, she's gonna give us that answer, right?
It would be very useful, actually. And, and I have a little analysis on the state standards coming up for you guys too. Because I think that's a critical part of, of our future work that needs to get done. Good, thanks Angela.
Right.
So here are, and this is the next slide. So I kinda did the average age of our state standards when you look at. So these are the current content areas. We have state academic standards that are approved at this point. You can see some of them, like arts, we're talking twenty-three years old, right? So if you app, tally up how old some of these are, the average age of our state academic standards is twelve point nine years right now. We, we, we need to spend some attention on that. And that, that was clear also from the educator feedback that I'm getting is that before we necessarily take things out of the rules, we don't have anything to fall back on, on the academic standards. So some of the recommendations I'm gonna propose to you folks at the end of this session have to deal with time and how much time we have with some of these in terms of their effect dates.
Is there anything written in law that states how frequently it should be reviewed?
Unfortunately, see, and that came out of the educator reviews also, is that the state academic standards don't really have an accountability behind them, cause there really isn't anything in the RSA like we have for the rules that say every ten years, right?
I thought they had ex- expiration dates.
The, the state academic standards do not.
No?
No, no.
Rules.
So that's, that was part of the concern of the educators of saying, wait, let's not remove these yet because we don't really have an ac- an accountability cycle in place for this. Thanks Angela. Here are some of the proposals. I would just wanna take you a little bit back in time. In November twenty twenty-two was the first time that a group of educators actually got together. It was set up by the New Hampshire Department of Education as well as um Frank Brumon- uh Fred Brumonte and NCC BL. Um, it was about forty-five to fifty folks for two days in Laconia. These were the initial paragraphs that the educators were given. And at that point, the feedback was, whoa, wait a minute, these are very broad. These are taking away some of what we really wanna guide in terms of consistent programming from one school to the next. You know, things like what you heard from these two students from Hockington, we want that to happen in all our public schools, right? I mean, I think we can all agree, they did a nice job talking about their experiential learning, which was integrated and applicable, right? We want that across all our schools. So I just wanted to give you kind of that, like the journey backing up a little bit to what led to where we are today. This was a proposed language that the commissioner during the working groups, um, suggested that we could use for the content areas. Again, the educator saw this and said, wait a minute, it's still feeling too broad. And there's concern that these academic standards are outdated and that there isn't really this continual cycle of review of the academic standards. So I think there's room for improvement in terms of that in our cycle around academic standards.
So just so everybody understands, so that language is actually right in the RSA, it's RSA one ninety-three E, yeah.
So these are the buckets that, um, the commissioner was talking about, the four areas that we talked about in terms of how educators would give their feedback. So the first one is that it, you know, we would take what's in the content sections and try to incorporate it into another part of the sections. The second one was that it would be carried forward, so it would essentially come out of the sections and carry forward into the state academic standards. The third one.
Can you give a good example of that for, that the board might help, that it might help set that? These are, like, so for example, I know, like, we adopted as a board the Holocaust standards.
Yeah.
But those are in the three oh sixes, in the content section. And so like, why did we put them there and not put them into the social studies academic standards as an example? So we're trying to kind of straighten all this out and be consistent throughout the process.
Right, so I mean, that's a perfect example right there where you could take Holocaust and genocide out of the rules if you had an updated.
But it needs to go someplace else.
Right, but, but the problem is the social studies standards are pushing seventeen, eighteen years old. And let's be honest, social studies is, is one of the most evolving content sections we have that we teach, right? So we really gotta remain current with that. And then the third area is really those double start items I showed you on the last where we don't have uh, um, state academic standards to back up these content sections in the rules. And then not necessary to the rule draft at all. So those were kind of the four categories. So, here's the results. Fortunately, unfortunately, however you wanna look at it, the educators were not in favor at all, like zero percent said, take them out of the rules. Um, they weren't in favor of moving them to the state academic standards and it wasn't because they didn't wanna lose things that are in the rules. They actually, one of the reasons it's taking so long to get through it is they pulled in national state standards. And although we can't literally call out a national state standards in the rules, like you can't say for school counseling, ASTA, right? We don't do that in legal rulemaking. They looked at them and said, well, what language can I get into the rules, right, to help promote that solid development, for example, in school counseling, right? So fifteen point one percent of them said the rules should remain in the current content and area sections with minor wording changes. And what I was able to do is dissect out, cause as I had them fill out their feedback forms, um, I also linked to what sections they reviewed. So you can see the, the areas where they're saying, okay, there's some minor tweaking to be happening is business ed, computer science, Holocaust and genocide. Um, mathematics program and social studies. I starred those cause they were kind of split fifty-fifty on terms of minor or significant wording. And then technology and engineering. And I, and I'm gonna give you an overview of each of these pretty quickly. Um, and then eighty-four per- point nine percent of the educators said they need to remain and there's need to be significant changes. And if you start doing a parallel track, this group that's listed here are some of the oldest academic standards. And that's why I think, you know, a lot of them said, we need to do some significant work on these rules because the academic standards are outdated.
Well, Christine, that's a good person there. Um, so that seems inconsistent to me to say, we want some in the three oh sixes and some and separated out from the three oh sixes in the content area. And if we're looking for consistency out, so what's, what's the argument for keeping them in the three oh sixes versus requiring the same things, but just putting them in a different section of rule?
You, so let me, make sure I got your question right, Chairman Klein.
Yeah.
So you're saying, what's the argument to keep them in the rules but not shift them to the academic standard?
Yeah, to keep them in the three oh sixes versus saying, well, we're just gonna flip them here.
Because what's in the rules now is so out of alignment with what the academic standards are and the rules are actually more progressive than the academic standards. And so the concern is shifting them there, it, where, where is that work gonna happen and how is that accountability going to happen? That cycle, because there's nothing behind it. I think what the educators wanna see is, similar to how we have a review with the rules, how do we do a review with the academic standard?
So can I just, that around the question around, cause I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not crazy too.
Yeah.
Cause essentially what we're saying then is that the academic standards were saying like, let's just supersede these in the three oh sixes. Rather than update the academic standard.
Basically, the edges are just saying, are saying, get rid of the academic standards right now if you're not gonna do anything to update them and, and put them in the three oh six rules.
Which was just making new academic standards, but not through the academic standards process, but through some other process.
Right, right, you're not.
And you can see why we have, we have to figure something out.
Right, and the concern is that getting them out of the rules then opens up a wide array of interpretation, right? Because there isn't this allegiance to the standards, to the academic standards, like there is this requirement and allegiance of local school boards to the rules. I mean, in the RSA itself, it says that the State Department of Education and the State Board can't force your local school boards to adopt the Common Core state standards. And right now, for ELA and math, that's what we point to as our state standards. So take that away and not have good quality, you know, standards around ELA and math, whoo, it would scare me about what you are, ELA and math.
But I mean, the, the, the law is that they have to adopt standards higher or equivalent to the state adopted standards. We've got math standards that are Common Core standards. And so school districts are required to adopt academic standards that are more rigorous. Um, as, and this is the floor, the middle.
So, you know, I was, I was investigating.
I just wanna make sure that we're clear about that, yeah.
Yeah, uh, well, that's where I think we may need to look back and point back to the RSA again. Because when I look at that section of the RSA, there's nothing about the judging of rigor behind it. It simply says that the local school board can adopt standards other than the Common Core. So that rigor, I, I understand, that's what I hope people would do too. But I wonder if somebody could push back to us and say, well, that's not what the law really says.
I think we're pretty strong on that legal standing, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, so I'd be cautious.
Cause remember, think about the wars we went through on the Common Core, right?
Yeah.
Manchester adopting the Manchester Common Core standards or the Manchester standards. You know, but it was like, well, they have to be at least as rigorous, right?
Yeah.
I think that does fairly well establish. I, I think, me, I'm just trying to understand, um, what I'd like to avoid is conflict in the rules. So, I think, and I could, I could have it wrong, I, I, I think the um motivation for moving them out of the three oh sixes to the standard area of the other sections is to have consistency and alignment. So, but if we have rules wherever they are, right? So if they're in the three oh sixes and they're contradicting the standards over here, that I think is a real problem because then what do you, you have to go with what's in the three oh sixes.
Correct.
Um, I just wanna make sure we're not creating, to the extent that we can, I know we have to update standards and that will take care of some of this. I, I, to the extent we can, I'd like to avoid creating two separate sets of rules that people think, which one do I have to follow?
Right, and, and I think that's.
Cause that's some of the confusion today, isn't it?
Right, and that's what the educators are also saying is, look. And, and they're being cautious and like I think you said, Chair Klein, that i- if there are conflict between the state standards and the rules, it's gonna be the rules that went out, right? So I think they have that same perspective in saying, look, let's get the rules right. And we know other work can fall. And we know other work can follow in the state academic standards. But until we get, and maybe something needs to happen from an RSA perspective. We get some accountability behind these state academic standards, right? Then we could probably come back a few years from now and say, okay, yeah, we could lift this out of rules, point to the state academic standards, right? But now what's in the rules is definitely leading down a better path than what's necessarily in some of our state academic standards. And I know that um Representative Lad had a bill around bringing back the notion of what we used to use, which was curriculum frameworks. Which which was a powerful document back in its day, you know, it didn't say, hey, this has to be your curriculum to the local level. But here's a model, right, to follow and it helped guided in it. Those curriculum frameworks were powerful documents back in the day because they did this integration and blending. Of the state academic standards and what needs to live in the rules that might not be in a state academic standard less.
Right, yeah, one of the things I'd like to hopefully come out of this is. So we've had some instances where school districts have not been aligning their curriculum with the state standards. They've not even been vertically integrating their curricula from one grade to the next. We we they've told us this, we know this happened. We've had some districts find this out, like not doing it when they're supposed to be doing it. And if we can get to a place that ends up with. A structure that makes it easier for them to do that and to understand, hey, you have to do this.
Yep.
I think that it would be a win.
And we have a couple of those places and so I.
Hopefully that's gonna come out of here.
Yeah, I I I wanna kinda get to this to show you. But some of the the bigger broader themes that educators started pulling out is some missing tenants, I call them tenants of competency based education. And three that we they really pulled out was this notion of, it's actually what you saw today with these two students. This notion that a focal point of competency based ed is not this isolation of content areas, like we lived in the factory model. But this true integration of, I call them future ready skills, you can call them work habits, disposition, right?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah.
And I am feeling this is a little bit of a level turn, but I mean, so we tried a couple of years ago to do that and I don't remember the outrage that was just like.
I think things come in cycle and I thi- I think, I think the state is ready.
So you think they're ready to to try and say like, we've gotta integrate this stuff, right?
I I do and I also, and that was clear in the educator, what they're, what they're got.
Okay. I just remember, I still have wounds from trying to do something.
We've gotten, we've definitely got respect before when we've tried to say, hey, maybe we can.
Well, I will tell you, when I was part of the working group, you know, through November, December, January. We had a lot of conversations, I'll look over my shoulder, around, we wanna put, if not that every, again, every district would have to adopt it. But a lot of districts are revisiting or doing work around their vision of a learner, vision of a graduate. A lot of people go to vision of a learner cuz it's not just, I wait till twelfth grade for everything to happen, right? Um and we said, it would be great if in our rules, we had guidance around a vision of a learner from the state. And I think that's a powerful and that, that's where I.
We've kinda got some of that now too, don't we, in this proposal, yeah?
Right, and what some of the content areas, the the educators started to have conversations across content um sections. Was, oh, problem solving, critical thinking, communication, I want that in English, I want that in tech and engineering, great. Then let's make a rule that would be vision of a learner, right, and put that. Because those are items that could definitely reduce what's in the content sections. You know, but as a math teacher, a former math teacher, I don't wanna give up my problem solving unless I know everybody's gonna. You know, because it's important to what we do, right? And same thing, you know, if I'm in.
I don't think you could take it out of math, but you could certainly maybe add it in other places.
Right, right, but you could really, and I think that's where you could get this integrated application approach that we wanna see in CBE developed, right? And the other thing, the two, items two and three on this list that the educators were clear about and I've I've got some suggested language from them. Is the importance in a competency based model, remember, it's not about seat time, it's not about uh. One and done test, it's about the body of evidence, the collection of learning that occurs. That shows my journey on a pathway to show I'm proficient in competencies, right? So it's, it and and so we need that, so. Last week I told you guys, please, 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 let's go back and revisit inserting the assessment section into the rules, that was a key one. Um and because the educator saw that for now in the draft, the assessment section had been um, you know, struck and through, uh strike throughs.
Just to set the record straight though, it's not gone, it's actually just moved into its own section, so it's taking amplified, you know, importance.
Well, that's good, because they brought some of that into their language on the fear that it wasn't going to live somewhere else, so.
I just for the record, we're not against assessment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't figure you would because you got an RSA, another one that says you gotta do it, right? Angela, go ahead, thank you. So this is where I bring up this conversation and and Chair Klein, I think you've raised some great points about the work that needs to be done around the academic standards. And so, you know, in this conversation of looking at effect dates for content sections, I think we're on the cusp. Of making an important decision around these content sections, meaning. Time can be our friend, it doesn't have to be something that we need to rush through. Yes, there are these in bold that are expiring, okay? But the good news is that I had over a dozen, I think it was like fifteen sixteen between career tech tech directors. And career tech teachers who want to combine three twenty with three thirty-four. And scale it, but and and put some more common language and update their CTE programs in it, right? So I think we've got room here, depending on how you wanna do it, and I know you've got the hundred and eighty day timeline, right? So this is work that could still happen and you still could be within your hundred and eighty day timeline.
So can I just, I just wanna help understand too, so those are the effective dates?
Right.
But actually, when you look into the language in those content sections, something goes back to nineteen ninety-three, like it. Is, we think that the standards maybe are dated, some of that language actually has its origin like three decades old, it hasn't been updated, you know?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, and that's why there's a lot, a lot of work was done in in bringing these CTE sections together. There was a lot of conversation around thirty-five, the career ed program, which isn't really CTE. It was more about um elementary and middle school and how we wanna develop basically feeder programs into our CTE. And so there was conversation about before we completely wipe that section out, it could find a home in a couple of other places such as school counseling. It could find a home in fa- family and consumer sciences. And CTE could also maybe inherit some things where we start this notion around. Career exploration at the elementary, middle, right, leading in. We don't want just CTE to be a high school phenomenon.
I must feel like, and this is great information, and as I'm looking at, I'm like, I think what's been happening is like. Every ten years, cuz knowing that many of those ones that we show effective dates of like fourteen, like that that language was from ninety-three. And what happens, like every ten years, everybody just goes like, okay, they're good enough, just do it. So we've done more work on that already.
Right.
And probably has ever been done in like three decades.
We have found, I did my years on the board, I have found so many times when we get a rule and uh it was essentially just. Re-adopted with no changes from the previous rule and we've got rules that are, and and some of that's fine, I don't, we don't, you have to change it just to change it. You know, sometimes they work and they're solid and then sometimes you're like, why is that thirty years old?
And school counseling and school uh and um school psychs are also up. And that's one of the two, th- those two are where I'm really starting first cuz I knew they had more emergency of um dates in terms of their expirations, right? But but why I give you this list, and if you wanna go to the next one, Angela, all of those, I mean, we're talking some of those sixteen, you're talking twenty twenty-six now, right? Uh granted, the language needs updating, that that's a clear theme from all the educators. The language needs updating, it needs to be brought in with national guidelines and and what we know. Are good things happening already, but that we wanna push forward, right? So I think, you know, one of my recommendations today is. Let's think about now that you've separated them into the two parts. How we might proceed with this part and still be within your hundred and eighty day rulemaking window, right?
Is it reasonable, is it reasonable that we don't just look at the ones that end in fourteen?
Of course, yeah.
That we look at all them based on the point that they, some go back to the nineties?
Right.
I think that's what, we're gonna give feedback that's across all of them, but I think what she's saying is like. You know what, if we're not sure about something, maybe what we could do is we just like, but let that one be in a holdover. But we wanna just not be that group that just kinda keeps passing them along every ten years.
Right, he, here's.
But that's your kinda thinking, right? Like some, some might be good for holdover.
Well, one I'm also thinking is, I now have list of educators who have worked on these, right? And but the thing is, some were in Hampton, some were in, you know, New London, some were in Gorham, right? So what I could do now is, I've got email lists and I can go back and say, okay, I've taken all your work, guys, I've synthesized it. Let's do, you know, go to, let's have three to five Zoom meetings of maybe an hour and a half each. And let's look at it and let's really get this language in a good spot, right? And be able to come back to all of you, you know, even before your hundred and eighty day window's up. And say, okay, look, this is solid language now, this has been vetted by.
I think that's what we're hoping.
Yeah, you know, I mean, the the what I'm initially giving you first is kind of me going, okay, well, they said this, they said this. But I haven't had an opportunity to loop back that feedback. Back to these folks to now say, hey, this is what, when when I did my sessions over the five geographic areas, to say, look, this is kinda. Where people were thinking, what do we think now as a whole group together?
Can I throw you a curveball?
Yeah, sure.
So this has been one of my frustrations on the board, is that we write, the these rules are on a ten year cycle. So we get them as they're about to expire and this is the process, so we're witnessing the process across the board right here. We chisel a rule in stone and we set it down uh for a decade. And practices change and things change and by the end of the decade, everybody's saying, wow, there's so much out of date. And then we take it and we chisel it in stone again for another decade. That's crazy, um I get the the need to write rules, but. Is there any thought along the way to devising a system that doesn't chisel something in stone for decades?
Become calcified.
And and actually works to be more flexible, let professionals. Incorporate changes, it 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 just seems silly that we have to, that the professionals in the field have to wait for the board. To to take these things up every ten years. That just seems like a slow bureaucratic system and it could work better.
I completely agree and I'm glad you added this cuz this is how I got involved, this is why I got involved. So when I was at the department, back in the, you know, two thousand five to like two thousand twelve era. We didn't wait ten years to open rules up, he, I'll give you a a case in point. So we had, when I was at the department, we had just like um set up the reading, writing specialist endorsement, right? And so we went back into the rules and said, wait a minute, if we're gonna add this endorsement and have reading and writing specialists. How do we upgrade the three oh six rules to make sure our enlangu- English language arts programs, right? Are being raised too. So a lot of times, I, when I worked at the department, a lot of times when we were opening up credentialing rules, at the same time, we were looking at three oh six rules and going, wait a minute.
And and we do some of that as well, like it's not, it doesn't always take ten years, but it's just that's the system we're on and. It just, it feels like it could work better.
I I think, I think honestly, if you if you figure out what we want in the rules, right? And and knowing that we've still got a lot of state academic standard work to do. If we if we agree to, okay, we've got some rules, then why not also make an agreement and say, okay, we're gonna go next and look at the state academic standards? When when we do that work and we feel confident that we're, we're going right back to the rules and we're gonna, you know, make sure there's no conflict. We're gonna make sure there's alignment. I think you always have to keep, for me, credentialing rules, three oh six rules. And your state academic standards in play with each other, right? You have to. Because, you know, they're in sync, so I don't, to me, I never saw a chiseling of, it's gotta be ten years, you gotta wait ten years, I think.
You don't have to, but that's just a little conveyor belt that it that it functions under.
I think that's what we just saw, you got thirty, you know, stuff from ninety-three who's still stuck there, right?
I mean, you got, you got stuff ranging from heck, all the way back to oh five to twenty twenty-two, right?
Ninety-three, really?
Yeah.
And and I guess my point is that um. Having some flexibility, writing rules in a way that empowers practitioners at the district level. To be more flexible, to make changes and adopt best practices on their own. You know, every time we move in that direction a little bit, what we hear is, you're dumbing down, you're weakening education, you have to write these things in the rules, why do you hate kids? And we're trained, we we want you to adopt better practices, we wanna give you flexibility. And that trying to strike that balance um is a challenge, but I feel like. You're illustrating kind of the point, which is if you don't give practitioners some flexibility. Then you wind up forcing them to use things that are out of date. And I would love to have a bigger conversation about how can we avoid the sense that we are making practitioners. Do things that are out of date. I don't know what the answer to that is, but I think that's a really important conversation to have.
I think we gotta.
This is the opportunity to have.
Yeah, I I and I think listening to the educators and, you know, seeing what they give for feedback will will definitely help.
Often what they give us is feedback is you have to write these things in rule cuz their practice is too dead.
Yeah.
And then we know that they change in five years and some other study will come up and then that's out of date, exactly what we're seeing.
Yeah.
So that's what we're stuck with, the feedback we often get is, we don't actually want the flexibility, we want you to write our preferences in the rule. And and make everybody do that.
That might be some, but that's not what I, over the two hundred and ninety-six educators I work with, I didn't get this sense that they wanted things to stay the way they were, I really didn't.
Right, that's what you're saying, I think you're saying, it's the same thing.
Right, that's exactly the tension is, uh we write it in rule, it stays in rule. They say, hey, these rules are out of date, um we want more flexibility. And we say, well, here's some flexibility and we get, well, don't give us that, write these things in rule that are current now. And that just starts the ten year process over again.
How do we, how do we build a system that allows those educators to be more dynamic in their instructional practice?
In other words, when best practices change.
Have them in too much, right?
It it would be nice if when best practices change, the rules reflected some flexibility there for educators. To adopt best practices as they change.
I think we can find language on those, I don't think out some sections.
Right, and and that's, that's what I would prefer to see. If we can do it in a way that, you know, doesn't freak people out and doesn't like, you know.
Or doesn't feel like we're lessening, we're not, we're not trying to lower that, we're trying to raise the bar by making sure that these educators are doing their best they can.
We're trying to basically say, we can't predict what changes will happen in the in the field in ten, ten years, in the next ten years. So when changes do happen, um you know, we know we want these things to be what you do in practice, but. Maybe there's some ways to build some flexibility in there and that's kinda what, I think that would relieve some of this tension. Over educators feeling like, well, God, the. The the field has changed, best practices are now in this direction and you're making me go in that direction, we would just. That, that's just a constant issue is what I'm hearing and if we can figure out a way to deal with that.
I I think we can, I and I think honestly, it it does start with the good conversations with the educators in the room. And and it talks about, yeah, yeah.
Good one, we're hoping that feedback helps us to formulate that.
And I I think it talks about being very thoughtful and mindful about the language we choose, right, the words we choose. Defining those words, if they have different meanings for folks. All right, I wanna keep going cuz I got a bit more here, go ahead.
Can I ask you a question?
We gotta really wrap up really quickly cuz we have some hearings to get to the fore, so.
I just a little quick one, you you um you have uh Hampton, London, Amherst, Meredith, or are there any other locations you're going to?
I've wrapped for this month because I do have a full-time job, so. Yeah, um I have wrapped, but yeah, I haven't done anything yet. So this is, one of the big things that came out was the opening sentence or paragraph of the content sections, right? And having some consistency with that, and in the February draft. I have up here what was in the February, cuz we always use the February fifteenth draft at in the sessions. Um it said, the local school board shall provide, and you insert whatever the name was, arts education curriculum in each elementary, middle and high school consistent with competencies. Determined pursuant to three oh six, twenty and twenty-one, which are the new codes, right, for uh K to eight in high school. Which may include, right? So the first one biggie is, they want the shall. They want the shall, and there was a lot of discussions.
This is to Drew's point.
Yeah, yeah, they, they want.
They're gonna give you options.
They want the shall.
They, yeah, they want the shall, but when you look at what some of the languages they're saying, it 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 is though some of the flexibility, like. Like in ELA, they want the foundational literacy skills listed there because they're not in the common core, right? So that's a plus, right? That's a positive for us. Um they want the shall, there was a lot of discussion around this require versus provide. Um and and it got to this point of require is like, it's a demand, right? I ask you to do it. You're supposed to take the action after it, whereas they felt like the provide was, you gotta have the action, if I provide it, I'm doing it, right? So it was this notion of a demand, ask versus an action to do it conversation that they had. Um so I tried to synthesize what they were getting at. And what what it felt like is, the local school board needs to require this, right? And then it would be, and and they changed from program, right, to, and they even changed from curriculum. To that they would require curriculum instruction and assessment in whatever the area is, let's say arts education, right? Um for grades kindergarten through twelve and then the pursuant part, which shall provide. And the shall provide was linked to the fact that the local school board was requiring curriculum instruction. Was requiring curriculum instruction and assessment in this area. That's how they interpreted that opening statement. Saying it's the, it's whatever the curriculum instruction and assessment that is required.
Not necessarily everything that followed, is what you're saying.
Well, that, that, the, everything that followed would need to be part of that curriculum instruction and assessment at a local level. That's how they view it.
I know we have, I know we're short on time, but did they realize that some of that stuff that followed maybe needed to be tuned up?
Yes.
The shall follow, if some shall followed, you're like, oh, not that.
Yeah.
You know, did this, but did this.
Well, there was a whole conversation. I know that you brought this up in one of our conversations about developmentally appropriate. What did it mean? They had a whole conversation about that. There's some removal of that, right? And stuff around that area. Um, what I do wanna say is that program means something entirely different to educators. When you say a program, they think, I'm doing everyday math program. I'm doing the Journeys reading program. So program, if we're gonna stick with program or we're gonna consider replacement language for program, I think we need to define program, okay? So I just wanna throw that out, because that, the other thing I wanna point out here was. This notion of using what we call elementary, middle, and high school to delineate things. Versus this notion of actually using grades. Here's why. You probably know where I'm going with this. Our middle schools in the state can be anywhere from grade four to eight. Our elementary schools can go up to eight. So if I say something only applies to a middle school, does that mean my eighth grader sitting in an elementary school? Doesn't get that experience as well. So they had a lot of conversations in the content areas about. How do we phrase this? Do we say it's in an elementary school or do we actually say like it's grades K to five? This should happen in six to eight, right? So they had that feedback. Go ahead, Angela. Um, I, I'm gonna skip this for a second. Um, general themes, you have this PowerPoint, but. A, a lot of the general themes here were about aligning to national guidelines, okay? Business ad, there's a lot of overlap with finance literacy with the CTE programs. There's some more cleaning up that needs to happen there. I already talked about the combining of the two sections in the CTE and the career ed. Go ahead, Angela. The computer science, this is the one I wanted to point out. The, maintain it as is. In fact, there's some things suggested come out of it. Because the state academic standards in computer science are super strong. They were done in twenty twenty two. They were done by groups of educators. So that was one section where people pointed to and said, this is a great example where we can rely, right?
Right, exactly.
Okay? Digital literacy, big overhauls in digital literacy. We had ISTI, New Hampshire ISTI involved. They sent representatives. Um, a lot of the digital literacy was very outdated, so there's some overhaul language there. English Language Arts, a lot of overhaul in terms of the science of reading and really wanting to promote that. Um, family and consumer science, very limited review. I only had one or two people around that. So that's another one where it could have the potential to you take in that career ed section. Um, and some updating, because that language is, is pretty old as well. Um, health ed and PE are lumped together. Um, they actually, the groups looked at the, it just came out like, um, two months ago. The updated national, um, guidelines, the shaped guidelines they're called around health and PE, so they brought in language from that. Um, the mathematics education, lot of conversation around there about the, what they call these mathematics habits of mind. That really aren't in the common core. Um, that they really wanted in, again, this would be a place where if we created that vision of a learner. That maybe this could live in a, a section that was around that. And then school counseling, again, aligned with national guidelines. And same with school site services. Um, science education, uh, they wanted more around the inquiry based around science and bringing in that language. And the connection to digital resources in science. Um, and the connection actually to some, um, design engineering, some of the not content stuff of next gen.
I think a good example, because the NGSS was just recently adopted as well.
Oh, two thousand ten. I mean, sev- no, seventeen, sorry, seventeen, seventeen. But it's still, I mean.
Do you know what I'm saying? Like, that's the national standard, so, right?
And then social studies, a lot of conversation around alignment to the C three framework. Which we, we, you know, haven't really come out as a state either way. And this notion of reliability and validity of resources. Technology engineering had a couple of great educators on this. And they, they actually have two versions for you. One to say, well, if you're gonna stay with the language you have. Here's some tweaking, but they've actually got another whole version that says, wait. How about adopting the twenty twenty two New Hampshire Tech and Engineering Guide? And pointing to that. Um, and so they have a version there too. And then the world languages, again, updating with national, what the kids talked about here with Owl, that came into the conversations. Holocaust and genocide, minor, that actually some of the draft changes were in contradiction to the RSA and that was pointed out by educators. And so they wanted to bring that back in. And then I do have a draft. I have some suggestions on personal finance literacy, because we have nothing, no rules, no. On that. And logic and rhetoric, the big push was integrating it in the content areas. And they wrote some language around that.
Awesome.
So I think, overall, there's the recommendations. Um, again, the real, the thing I'd like you to think about is, we have time with some of these sections. We have time within even your rulemaking window to do this feedback loop with educators. To say, okay, this, 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 now what can we make really well? Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
You're, you are invaluable.
Yeah, um, and reach out and if you guys.
And it's just a start.
Yeah. Yeah, and that, that's the key. It's, it's a started con- it's, you know, beginning conversation. Um, and I think we have the ability to, you know, make some of these shifts and, and. I do think, and he knows, I know, I affirm believe it, we need to focus on the state academic standards.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah.
That was very helpful. Okay, so what we're gonna do now, we have public hearings that start at noon, but I think we can get through some of these, uh, other hearings. I wanna take off the stu- the three student versus Monroe School Board. Are any parents here on the Monroe? Matters?
Is there anybody from the school district?
Any from the school district here? We didn't have any.
Anybody on Monroe?
Anybody on Monroe? We had no one signed up for. So I don't think we need to go into non-public for this, um, we're not hearing. Any presentations from anyone? Anybody from Monroe? Nobody out there? Okay. Which, um, I don't, did they anticipate it happening later? Because. No one was supposed to, we had no one say they were gonna speak on this, except. From my understanding was that if Heret wanted to just make some comments, but not really.
Okay, that was my understanding too.
So why don't I hold on to this one for a minute, um, since no one's here for either of those? I'm gonna wait and see if somebody shows up. Um, we have student versus Governor Whitmore School Board. You're here, um, you're here. Heret? Would you like this in non-public or public? It's really your preference.
Public.
Oh, all right. Well then, come on up. Did I have anyone signed up? Just Liz isn't here, um. I don't believe we, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe we had you registered as doing oral presentation, or did we?
I received an email from Stephen.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, asking if we're gonna present an argument.
Yeah.
The attorney for the SE, we get it, they've heard of an argument and I want to revolve, as he did.
Okay, okay. Uh, all right, well, normally we let Heret go first, um, but if he'd like to.
Is the school district here?
I think it's for.
The school district is here, yeah.
Where my, uh, where I'm pressing my case with the hearing officer's recommendation report.
Okay.
That really is only a revolve of this one.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you very much. All right.
So the school district.
Yep, so the school district is coming up.
You can come on up and sit in the front row if you mind.
Yeah.
Hi, Joy.
Hey. Yeah, just take a seat right there. You're all set, all right? If they have questions, then they can just ask.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
So, um, I'm Allison Tampozzi, uh, trustee for the district. I'm joined here. Um, you can introduce yourself.
Sure.
Carolina Arpaely, superintendent for Governor Langworth's station for the district. So we did submit exceptions to the hearing officer's decision. Um, I don't know if you haven't, I have paper copies if anyone wants it.
Would you, just in case, it might be easier for us to reference.
Here you go.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, so I won't belabor everything in the written. Um, however, I'll hit the high points for you and answer any questions. Um, so we're here to present just our, our exceptions to the hearing officer's order, um, which overturned the district's McKinney Vento eligibility determination. Um, as well as the temporary order issued by the commissioner. Um, and to understand the facts of this, to understand this case, a background would be helpful, just in the facts. Um, this case involved a student with parents who share fifty fifty custody, um, pursuant to a parenting plan. The mother at all times has had permanent residence that has, that the parties agree is adequate, um, in Maine. So really, the first main question of this is whether or not we look to one parent's housing. For the purposes of McKinney Vento, as of, when the student has access to adequate housing elsewhere. Um, the student's mother is a teacher in one of the district's schools. Um, so the family endeavored to have the student attend there as a matter of convenience. Um, during the twenty twenty two, sorry, twenty twenty two, twenty three school year, um, they sought to enroll students in the district despite not being residents. Ultimately, the fa- student's father represented that he had, he obtained rental unit in the district. However, he failed to provide any documentation of, um, that prior to moving a second time in October. Um, despite not having appropriate documentation, they permitted the student to begin at the school in good faith. With the understanding that they would receive that documentation, um. And reviewing the evidence submitted, um, by the district for their document submission, um. And I don't believe father disputes this. Um, he resided with a friend, personal friend for a few months, rent free. Um, and then following this, he obtained a short-term rental in the area. Which was month to month with the understanding that it would be up by the summer of twenty twenty three. Um, by December first, father still had not provided proof of residency. Um, his girlfriend had reached out to the district inquiring anonymously. Um, about the possibility of McKinney Vento applying in this circumstance. Um, after hearing that she could potentially qualify, um, the father finally provided the requested documentation four days later. Um, so the, from the district's perspective, the father had been contemplating McKinney Vento prior to even establishing residency within the district. Um, the student attended school within the district for the twenty two, twenty three school year, um, as father expected. Short-term lease ended sometime prior to the summer of twenty twenty three. And then he moved in with, um, Ms. Laro, his girlfriend, in Thornton, which is a, um, town outside of the district. Um, so the father reached out to the homeless liaison in July twenty sixth, um, seeking McKinney Vento protections. Um, he did not mention that he split custody fifty fifty. Instead, he stated that he was the sole custodial, custodial parent for the student. Um, on this basis, student was initially found eligible by the homeless liaison. Um, closer to the start of the school year, the liaison contacted the student's school regarding the enrollment. And learned more about the situation and, um, the custody arrangement. Um, therefore, the district ultimately revised the eligibility determination to find them ineligible. Um, the father took the case through the district's appeal process and the commissioner issued a temporary order. Finding the student ineligible based on the mother's permanent residence. Um, a more detailed statement of the facts is available in the memo of law we submitted to the hearing officer. Um, I'm not sure if you have access to that from below, but the, um, there's pretty detailed with citations to the record. Um, the party then had a hearing before the DOE hearing officer, who reversed the district and the commissioner's decision. Um, we respectfully submit that the hearing officer's determination was in error for, um, several reasons. The first being that the hearing officer misapplied the definition of homeless children and youth in the act. By finding the student homeless despite having access to the mother's permanent home. Um, as noted before, this is contrary to the temporary order in this case. But it's also inconsistent with cases that have interpreted the McKinney Vento Act in other jurisdictions. Um, so these include administrative agencies and actually a Massachusetts case. Um. One example is the JS case, and I won't go through all of the case law cited. It's in the packets I sent you. But the JS case, um, it, student was found not to be homeless, where students were able to live with their father, who had joint custody. Um, the US District Court of Massachusetts found similarly in the Doe case. Um. It looks, from looking at the hearing officer's decision, it appeared to base its decision on the party's parenting plan. Um, and that a court order altering the parenting plan had not been obtained. Um, and I cited that language in the exceptions. Um, we have several, um, concerns with that language. First, it ignores that the parenting plan had not been updated because the parents had chosen not to do so. There's an email in the materials that say that they've been advised not to revise the parenting plan until after permanent housing was obtained, or they, this was ironed out. Um, otherwise, more importantly, this argument, um, is not rooted in the law. There's nothing under McKinney Vento or, um, the case law interpreting it that. States that a parenting plan can dictate whether or not a student is eligible under the act. Um, it also ignores the plain language of the parenting plan, um, which conditions the student's attendance on father maintaining residency. In the district and contemplates attendance in the mother's district if enrollment is, the district was not possible. Um, next, we submit that the district failed to give the father the burden of proof at the hearing. Um, under Ed two oh nine oh two, in the cases interpreting the act. Um, the father actually had the burden of demonstrating eligibility. Um, despite a request, we, there was never a ruling made on the burden of proof at the hearing officer level. Um, so therefore, we cannot determine whether the burden of proof was fairly applied in this matter. And we further submit that based on what we see in the report and recommendation, we, the father was not given the burden of proof. Um, for example, we find, we believe that the hearing officer erred in finding that the student does not have adequate fixed regular housing. Um, in meeting his burden for that. The cases that cite, that talk about the act, talk about how sharing the housing of others without more does not establish homelessness. Um. Father did not present any evidence below of the more required. Um, such as photographs of the home, photographs of the room that they were, um, occupying, things like that. Um, the evidence that was submitted shows that the father and daughter moved into the girlfriend's three-bedroom condo. Um, where only Ms. Laro and her two children resided prior. Um, the bedroom now occupied by father and student was previously unoccupied. Um. And there's no argument that the home was inappropriate or unsafe. That they do not ac- have access to the whole home, or that they were unable to stay in the home full-time. Which are things that cases interpreting the act have looked at to see whether or not housing is adequate. Um. And I would just submit that the hearing officer determined that the state was, the student was eligible because. She shared a room in a condo owned by the father's girlfriend. Um, while we say this is in conflict with many cases interpreting the act. I also would submit that there are s- many families that have similar housing arrangements that do not consider themselves homeless. An ideal housing arrangement is not sufficient to qualify under homeless under the act. Um, so the hearing officer also erred by emphasizing that the father was not on the lease for the condo. Um, there's plenty of cases that state that just not being on a lease doesn't show that the housing is transient or temporary. Um, there's no indication, there was, Ms. Laro had testified at the hearing. And she did not state that there was a time they had to move out. Um, or, and that's one thing that these cases look at. Um, cases also have stated that stated intent to move back at some point does not make it transitional. Um, and cases have required a showing of evidence that they were looking for alternative housing, such as rental applications. Housing assistance applications, et cetera, to show, to admit the burden that they, um, were looking for housing. And they didn't have a fixed adequate residence. Um. We also believe that the hearing officer erred in ruling that the father has been unable to find anything they can afford in the district. And that's a similar kind of what I've just talked about, that there was no evidence submitted. As to the financial situation, um, economic status of why they can't afford housing in the district. Um, the father agreed that he has not looked for housing outside of the district. Um. But while we dispute that that's the standard, which, that the hearing officer didn't really address that. Um, we note that the father presented no evidence about the ability to afford housing, um, aside vague references. Um, to the state of the economy and debt. Um, on the other hand, the evidence at the hearing did demonstrate that the father did not lose housing due to economic hardship. Um, that he didn't lose his job, that he didn't change any type of work. He actually received a cost of living raise in the last year. So nothing changed economically from when they initially had, sought to enroll in the district and at the time, that the lease was up as planned. Um, but it's, so then, again. Is, it was the burden of proving eligibility. We submit he didn't meet that burden. Finally, um, we submit that the hearing officer erred by bas- Finally, we submit that the hearing officer erred by basing his ruling on best interest determinations. Under the McKinney Vento Act, it's the first step is determining eligibility. So do you have fixed adequate regular housing? Are you homeless under the act? Second, you get into, if yes, then you look at what's in the best interest, where should the student attend school? But it's a different, there's a two step process to get there. And this was actually noted prior, but in this case, three of the thirty seven factual findings in the report and recommendation were focused on what parents feel was in the student's best interest and matters of personal con- like parental convenience such as childcare. The mother works in the district and takes, can drive the student home. And so it, they talk about how it's easier for the family, for the student to attend at this school, which we submit is not a proper consideration in determining whether a family is homeless under the federal law. In some, we submit that the father didn't meet the burden of proof in demonstrating eligibility. The hearing officer's order is not only contrary to the case law interpreting it, it also greatly expands the scope of McKinney Vento. And disputably has access to a residence in Maine. Therefore, she's not eligible under the act. And there's no occasion to require the district to continue to enroll a student that does not go there. So we request that the district, I'm sorry, we request that the hearing officer's order be overturned and uphold the district's determination. Thank you.
Do you have anything to add?
I do.
Okay. Give you a chance to respond.
Do you want us to stay up here or go back?
I think you guys can switch spaces. Good morning, welcome.
My name is Christopher Waite, father to Annabelle Waite, who's the student question here. I'd like to address a couple of things that the attorney for the SAU had brought up about residency and things of that nature. Yes, it was a very difficult process to get into the Governor Wentworth School District. I did so because I believed that that was in the best interest of my daughter and our co-parenting arrangement with my, my ex-wife. So I took the steps to get into the school district. I was fortunate enough to have somebody who lived in New Durham in the school district, who had been a friend of mine in the association of the fire department, that allowed me to stay in this property while I could get another property lined up, which I did through him as a matter of fact. The lease was indeed month to month. However, everybody knows that a month to month lease does not indicate a temporary housing. The SAU's, the facts in this regard are a little skewed. There was initially, when I had spoken with the property owner, a month to month lease, there was option for extension that would be discussed come the summer timeframe as it was a seasonal rental. So it was never the intention that I wasn't going to remain in that residence throughout the year. It wasn't until mid-April of twenty twenty three that the property owner had indicated to me that he was wanting to sell the home. Our look into the McKinney Vento Act was as a concern with the cost of housing going around and whether or not I was actually going to become homeless, not whether or not Annabelle was going to remain in the school district. After considering all the factors there, I'm unable to move any further away based on New Hampshire State law and the parenting plan, which is where the housing that is cheaper is located. I have made efforts to secure housing back in the school district as early as, or as late as last week, which have been unsuccessful. With the attorney's request that the burden of proof be put on me, but without the hearing officer confirming that, I didn't feel like it was necessary for me to take pictures of my home and provide the financial documentation. They are going off the assumption that because I haven't done that, that none of these things have taken place. And that's not entirely true. I didn't have any data for my income in the last year, but I've lost, I made four thousand less dollars in twenty twenty three than I did twenty twenty two. And I have lost income in my second job because my hours have been cut. The loss of the housing, I think I've already kind of spoken to that. I was in a month to month agreement with him. The extension was potentially to be there. In the meantime, I was still looking within the Governor Wentworth School District for housing and was unsuccessful at that point, which is why we look to say, what is the possibility here thereafter for the best interest of my daughter? I'm a father in a situation I don't want to be in. I've been, I've been in tough spots where I've had to work hard to get through this stuff. And I'm doing everything I could possibly do because I believe that my daughter deserves the best. I know every parent feels the same. My daughter's got ADHD, severe ADHD, she's medicated, she's got a five oh four plan, and she is, we're doing behavioral training at home through therapists with me and her mother to try and, to do this. Her academics have been pretty good. And her social development and emotional development have flourished in where she's at, and it's been a tough road with her. And there is no mistaking by any professional that deals with any of these conditions that would tell you that stability is important. I, I've taken every step I possibly can to get back into the school district to remain there. The, the school district had said that the reason why we don't want Annabelle heading to her mother's house in Maine is as a matter of convenience, and that's not entirely true either. Annabelle's best interest is still in mind by both her mother and I, we're in agreeance on this. We do not agree that it's in her best interest to spend as much time away from home and family where her mother works at the Governor Wentworth School District, so far away from where Annabelle would be going to school should she live there. Additionally, I'm even further away by almost two hours, given that direction. So if my ex-wife was not able to do anything for her daughter, it's going to be three and a half hours before I can get to her. I know that none of that's really a consideration of whether or not she's eligible, but I feel like some context of the background here is important. Because our children's best interest is really why we're here. I understand that the attorneys believe that the hearing officer's decision was made best interest only, but the fact remains that I did lose my housing. I did not plan on losing my housing. I did not plan on not having housing within the district. I have experienced economic hardship, and McKinney Vento specifically states that persons or individuals that live in the company of other families are eligible as homeless. She said that there's, I heard her say that there's lots of other families out there that are in these same situations that wouldn't consider themselves homeless. But they are. And whether or not they consider that, they are homeless. And I'm in the fight for my daughter's life. I feel like moving her to the Waterboro School, where my intention is still to come back to the Governor Wentworth District regardless of whether or not she's found eligible. My intention is still to come back. I'm still looking at homes, I've been pre-approved for houses for myself. I'm moving individually, my girlfriend will not be moving with me. And I've taken steps to try and make this happen as fast as I can. I really believe that any disruption to her education is going to stifle her socially, emotionally, and academically. I think that she deserves a shot at some stability, and it's not her fault that I'm in this situation. I'm just hoping that, you know, humanity kind of wins here, you know?
She's first grade, correct?
She's first grade.
Just turned.
Yes.
Where did you live before, before this all happened?
I lived in Farmington.
Lived in Farmington.
Yeah, which is where I, where I work. I came, just came straight from work. So yeah, which is where I worked. Her mother and I had discussed, you know, come school age, what we were going to do. And I, we came up with what was in the best interest for her was if she could go somewhere where we both have access to her, where she, we can maintain a fifty fifty custody because talking to her doctor, talking to her therapist, everything has been stability, schedule, regimen, you know, the ADHD lives in the moment, so you've got to be consistent with all that stuff and try and minimize changes. So I said, well, if we do make a change, it's, it would be, it would make the most sense for me to uplift where I am and move in order to allow that to happen. Again, the, it's skewed saying that the facilitation of, the reason why we don't want Annabelle to go to Governor Wentworth is to make it easier on us, that's not, that's not the truth at all. As a matter of fact, it's made it very difficult, very difficult. I've had months of anguish over this and, but I won't stop fighting for it.
Mr. Waite, can I just clarify timeline here?
Sure.
Just to make sure you got it. The, it says the parenting plan was from the fall, August and September of twenty twenty two.
Correct.
And, and where were you living at the time? Were you, were you in Farmington?
The fall of the parenting plan, I'm sorry, do you have the exact date?
Well, it, yeah, so it just says between August nineteenth and September sixth of twenty twenty two.
So at that point, I'd already transitioned from Farmington into New Durham into the temporary home.
That's what I thought.
So the, it was established during the hearing that residency was made. The, the four days later of the evidence, that's just a coincidence. It can be looked at as, you know, I mean, I got it four days later. The district went as far as to say that, you know, I was complicit and malicious in, in, in planning on this. I don't know a single parent that would put themselves through all of this just for that. It's, it's asinine. And, and that would also mean that my girlfriend would have to be complicit as well, whom I had just met. And, well, I think it was the beginning of September, before I had even moved to New Durham. So and to say that I did this intentionally is, I didn't even know McKinney Vento happened until there was even a thing, until months after I had moved to New Durham. And my girlfriend, who is a school counselor, informed me of that. So we asked some questions saying, yes, is she eligible? Is this possible in case? What, who wouldn't prepare for that? And the whole idea, the spirit of the McKinney Vento is to provide stability for the students so that they're not changing stuff. And it would be remiss to move her to the Waterboro School when I am still making sense to come back to Governor Wentworth. And her mother and I are both in agreeance that even if she's not found eligible and she goes to Waterboro, as soon as I'm back in the Governor Wentworth School District, we are going to move her back. So her mother goes to school there, that works there. She gets to see her mom every day. You know, it makes her a happier kid.
Kate, did you have more?
Yeah. Timeline, and I read this three times.
Okay.
Since Monday, oh. So you, you're from, from Farmington, wanted her to go to the Douglas School. And when you met with the gentleman renting?
Yes.
It, when I read it, it sounded like you were aware that your lease was going to be up in May of two thousand twenty six.
We had the potential that it could be up then, yes. It was a month to month lease, it was discussed that we could extend, but at that point, we'd have to change because it was a seasonal rental and, and he wasn't going to miss income.
Was your rental, did it say that if the lease expired in May two thousand twenty?
I can't recall, I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to look at the lease itself. But even, I mean, even if it had an expiration date, every lease has, you know, most leases, I should say, have an expiration date with the expectation that that person might be able to renew their lease.
When did he tell you that he was going to sell?
April of twenty twenty three.
That's the first notice you got?
It was probably the beginning of April, I would say, yeah. He said, hey, you know, we, I know I had talked about, you know, seasonal and stuff like that, and I, I don't know. I don't know his business, so I don't know what made him come with the determination that he wanted to sell the home. But whatever it was, he was mulling it over until that point. And the home sold relatively quickly. And the, and I did contact the new property owner to see if there was any interest in renting, and she decided that she was going to use that as her primary residence, so. So I was unable to do that.
Did you look in when you knew, before you signed this, or in the middle of signing it and doing a lease to lease, did you ever look for other houses?
Oh, yeah. Before I actually even moved in there, I was still looking for other places. I was looking for homes to purchase, and I just simply couldn't afford it. I just couldn't afford it. And I don't think I have to present any data here, everybody knows what the housing market has been doing. A cost of living increase is exactly that, the cost of living. It washes everything. It keeps you on the same keel as the entire economy, is the idea. So to try and use that as to say I'm making more money, at the very least, I'm making a three percent increase on my salary. A three percent call is subjective to what you make in the rate.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And best of luck, I know it's a tough situation here.
Thank you.
Could I just quickly just clarify the timeline? I don't know if that would be helpful, I have some of the documentation for you.
I'm sure, just really quickly.
Do you want me to come back or?
Yeah, if you could.
So the original lease was set to end March twenty twenty three. For that lease, it, originally they had rent for twelve hundred, and then it was determined afterward that there actually was, it was a personal friend, that he had told the district, there was a personal friend that was letting him stay there. Then there was the second, so that was one property. Then there was the Mary Meeting Road property, which was month to month, but emails that the district had received, including the one, the anonymous question, said that they, they anticipated leaving by the summer. So that was as of December, there was discussion about it being up by the summer. I also just wanted to point out that a lot of what you heard was not heard by the hearing officer. Some of these, about the lease extension, that's new. Additionally, things about his current job prospects, that also was not heard by the hearing officer. So I would just encourage the board to stick to what the hearing officer heard at the time. In terms of the burden of proof, we did argue the burden of proof prior to the hearing. So the father was aware that that was our position and that he'd have to be presenting evidence at the hearing. So I would not ignore the fact that there was a burden to produce evidence of these elements of eligibility. We are not asserting that there was any malicious intent here. I just wanted to clarify, we are just, say, he's not eligible based on, and the circumstances of this kind of highlight where there's really no permanent housing ever established there. They got their foot in the door and then at that point, you can stay in the interim. So it's just, it, it just highlights why the McKinney Vento law is the way it is to show that you need to have access to permanent temporary housing. So anything to add?
Well, just that the decision is based on if the student qualifies for McKinney Vento, if the student is determined to be homeless. And so in thinking about the student, it's never been disputed that the mother has fixed adequate housing the entire time.
This is, is aside, does your district have any policies to employees, children attending your school?
Great question, no. It, it has been allowed in the past, but it's not a formal policy.
And you've discussed this in the past, and you, you've been clear that that would be through tuition, that the student would pay tuition if they are able to attend, however, there would be tuition involved. And that's something that has been offered to the family.
All right, any other questions? One more time and then we really have to map it out. But yeah, you, give you a chance to respond.
Excellent, thank you. The hearing, with the hearing officer was recorded. You guys can review the notes of the hearing officer. It was mentioned in there that there was an extension on the lease. All right, so I'm not going to argue that. The implication of the malicious intent would be implied when they said that I didn't send that letter until four days later, after, through, that would show premeditation, which would imply intent. But that wasn't the case. I just want to address that because, okay. And then, with regards to her mother having fixed adequate housing, this is true, she does. However, it's not seven days a week. Annabelle does not have fixed adequate housing seven days a week. Seven days a week, or the days that she's with me, she is not in fixed housing. McKinney Vento is very specific about living with other members. It doesn't talk in the McKinney Vento about the conditions in which they live in, in those rooms. Annabelle could have her own room, and under McKinney Vento, she's still living with another family. All right, that's not the case here, we share a room. All right, I don't have any belongings or minimal belongings at, at my girlfriend's house. Mostly what's Annabelle's. Everything else that I have is in storage in Farmington. I've established my life in that area, doctors, appointments, dentists, same thing with my daughter. Her, her doctor's in Wolfboro, her dentist is in Alton. My, my job is there, there's nothing to lead anybody to believe that I, that I wanted to leave that area.
Understood.
So to say, I had a choice because the lease was coming up, well, leases end all the time and people can't find new leases. Just because the lease is ending doesn't mean there's something available for them on the other side. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, discussion? Thoughts, motion?
I need to stay forward to adopt the hearing officer's report and recommendation.
That the, that the family is homeless?
Yes.
Discussion?
Need a second, first, right?
Yeah. No second. All right, no second.
I'll sign that.
You will.
I'll sign that.
Okay, discussion?
I feel for the child more than anyone else here, for the family. But when I look at determination of homelessness under McKinney Vento, this feels like beyond the fixed adequate housing concept. That, and I recognize that the parenting plan seems to have put us in a precarious position where this child could potentially be considered part-time homeless when, under the care of one parent and not homeless under the other. But I don't think the law allows us to make, to split that hair.
Yeah, I, I, as I read, as the parenting plan is quoted here, if, it begins, if she is eligible, this shall attend the school in the district that issue, where the father lived, that was in the Douglas at the time, um, and it's out. Um, that is not, uh, that's by agreement by the parents that she should go to the Douglas School District. That's how that was written, if she's eligible. That is different than a parenting plan that says, because they can be written all kinds of ways. And the parenting plan can be written to say, shall always go to the district that the father is, you know, presaged with the father. I mean, there are all kinds of ways you can write that. To me, that is not necessarily dispositive in this case because, uh, if she is eligible and if the father is not living in the district anymore, she's not eligible. And, and so I, as I read this, I think the hearing officer made a mistake. This, to me, just doesn't reach the definition of, uh, homeless under McKinney Vento, as, as I read it. As much as I feel for the family and, and the, and the child, especially in this case, um, we gotta stick to the law and how it's written. I don't, I don't see that. That's my, did you say? Kate, did you have anything?
Well, I'm torn because I do understand what, what he's going through. I do. I totally understand it, believe me. And one throw, I totally understand that. Um, but I'm also policy perceived by the rules. So, I, I'm torn on that, I am, I'm really torn. But is there a deadline date that his girlfriend is going to say, you've got until June to be out? Because that would be really homeless. That's how you describe homeless. So, you know, even though he doesn't have anything in, doesn't have any belongings or anything like that, so I'm kinda torn.
Well, I mean, similarly, you could, I mean, we're towards the end of the year, you could allow this child to finish the year and then, you know, allow the parent between now and the start of the next school year, year to establish the residence.
That was my, can, can we?
It's, it's an option that's presented.
We did that, um, it's.
You have done that in a.
Yeah.
That's right.
Just to not disrupt the child in the middle of the school year, right?
So.
Correct.
So I would like to retract my motion. And move instead that I move that the state board rejects the hearing officer's report and recommendation and finds that the student is not homeless under McKinney Vento. I further move this student shall remain in the school district for the remainder of the school year and the parent shall continue to provide transportation to the student.
Okay, second, I like that.
Read it one more time, Ian, I'm sorry.
Sure.
It's hard to hear.
Yep, um, I move that the State Board of Education rejects the hearing officer's report and recommendation, find that the student is not homeless under McKinney Vento Act. I further move that the student shall remain in the school district for the remainder of the school year and that the parent shall continue to provide transportation to the student.
Should we add in there that this is?
Securing housing.
End of the, um, school years in June, so he's got till July and August, really.
You don't have to worry about that because if he establishes residence, then obviously he's gonna be eligible.
Okay.
This would just cover the regulars.
Okay, just long as we, okay, we're back, definitely.
And I just to keep, to provide continuity for the student, we don't want her yanked out of school, uh, in the middle of school year. And fingers crossed, you know, housing is found in the district, that would be wonderful.
Yeah.
So this is a way of working out for the student and respecting the interpretation of the law. So we have a motion.
Yeah, but if you would focus on the law, it's, you know, a good thing, but we have the child involved here.
All right.
Okay.
Any other discussion? That's the motion on the table? All in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
All right, no opposed.
Okay.
I would love to have just ordered this differently. We are stuck, our decisions are appealable to the state Supreme Court. Um, and that's the way it goes. Um, seriously, best of luck, I know it's a hard situation. Um, all right, thank you, everybody, for your patience with us. Uh, it is now time to open our first public hearing.
And actually, so Monroe, there's gonna be no speakers.
Okay.
Turned out all for a second, so if you wanted to do this.
All right. Um, so, all right.
Let's see if there's anything.
We have twelve o'clock to do our first hearing. All right, so legislative rulemaking, emergency authorization, number five oh four dot oh four. Anybody? Okay.
It's on, it doesn't need to speak.
Yeah. Nobody?
Okay, here we go.
Okay. So, public hearing is open on eighty-five oh four dot oh four. In the meantime, no one signed up for speech, so we can take out the student Monroe School Board cases. Those are free cases.
Yep.
Um, and no one is, no one is here for either the parents or. No one's here from Monroe?
I think I signed on the sheet.
Oh, okay. Are you here from Monroe?
No.
Okay, you can go check on the sheet then. Which one are you here to test, fan?
On the audit.
Uh, we don't have a hearing.
That's not, we don't have a hearing.
You probably wanted public comment.
Yeah, yeah, public comment, okay.
She wanted public comments at the dispute resolution process.
Yeah, we missed the, our public comment period's over. Um, so, were you, what's your name?
Jennifer Pike.
Oh, she offered?
No, Adrian, yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, and public comment's over and the name wasn't on the sheet, but if you have some written testimony, you can leave us, we absolutely read it and take your comments and you can email us with comments on feedback, so we don't wanna, um, disrupt the meeting process and reopen public comment, but absolutely would love to get your feedback.
I would love it if you would.
Nah, yeah, I'm not gonna do that.
Is it, or is it on one of the?
I'd be five minutes.
Yeah, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna reopen public comment, but.
If it's on ED three or so.
If it's, right, I mean, so that's, that's a different topic, yeah, so. Um, so we're gonna stick to our, our agenda, but these. So.
Was it?
So the public comment was in the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Um, so we have limited time for that and for everything else on the agenda. Um, but we would love to hear what you say.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we have email access.
Yeah.
We take written comments. Um, if anything you wanna leave with us or send us later, absolutely, we'll read it and consider it. And thank you so much for coming, I'm sorry that.
We get these ones too.
Yeah, and, and we have public comment next month as well. So, that's an option, if you'd like to come back and do it in person. Thank you.
I thought it was, I thought, I thought you said.
Yeah, we have, it might have been a little, we have a public comment section at the beginning of the meeting and we have public hearings on separate topics later. That may have been.
I'll take the agenda and have one.
Okay, all right. Uh, so, student Monroe's school board. I have, um, and, that's a possibility for.
Okay.
Because the way they, um, this is the, the top page there. Um, because one of the remedies that was asked for, it's really not clear that we can order. Right, we can't really order the department to do stuff, or, yeah, but we can certainly. But just say that.
Okay.
And the, um, you were, this is, so.
Number two.
Uh, well, two. And we'd have to do both. So what happened, um, the hearing officer, these were basically all one case and the hearing officer separated them into separate ones without bringing that to us.
Yeah.
So I think us approving that officially.
All right, so I move that, this is my first motion, there will be two. Um, I move the state board adopt the hearing officer's report and recommendation dated August twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three to grant the student's motion for se- separate decisions with the docket numbers assigned previously. And number two, I move that the state board adopts the hearing officer's report and recommendation for the following cases. Student Monroe School Board case, uh, twelve dash zero zero eight. Student, um, Monroe School Board twelve dash zero zero seven. And student Monroe School Board case twelve dash zero zero six. In part by moving that the state board should accept the hearing officer's recommendation that the MSP should acknowledge that local board's findings that no bullying occurred is erroneous and retroactively require that the MSP comply with the duties required under J I C K by immediately notifying the family of, of the, um, alleged, um, of the alleged bully's name that a finding of bullying in this matter has been made.
Sorry.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Um.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. So the last one, uh, on those is student versus Pittsfield School District. We gotta vote to remove this from the table.
Yes.
Love it, you wanna do that? What's that?
What did you say?
Uh, student Pittsfield.
Yeah.
It was tabled last month, so we have to remove it.
I, I move that we move the Pittsfield case from the table.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's up. Uh, is anybody here from Pittsfield? Or I don't think we have.
See anyone?
Okay.
They were here last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't know if they came back for it. Uh, yeah, so we heard the hearing last month, all we have to do is, uh, make a decision. Any discussion? That or a motion? Any thoughts about that? Well, I, I like that.
So, obviously, the RSA is vague. And open to some level of interpretation.
It's not one that I'm more tied with.
Yeah.
I've seen.
And it's shocking to hear an RSA is vague.
Shocking.
Uh, but it does seem, if we look at original intent, given that this was the charter, charter school and open enrollment together, the concept of a sending district being to have approved becoming open enrollment themselves or sending people to open enrollment in order for another district to receive a student from that district does seem to be beyond what the intent of that district, of that original RSA might have been. Which if they got.
And there's no reference to that requirement.
And there's no explicit reference to it.
Yeah.
Correct.
My difficulty was in, um, the school district's attorneys just not being able to point anywhere in the statute where it said they can, they could just not tuition a kid. They had to vote to do that, there's nothing in the statute that says what she says it said. And I, I, that was my difficulty, isn't it? In order for, and we had this conversation, in order for the district, as the statute's written, it just reads pretty plainly that in order to block your own students from going to an open enrollment district somewhere else, you have to adopt the open enrollment statute yourself. It doesn't say, it doesn't lay out any process for doing that outside of adopting the open enrollment statute. And I think that's where we're stuck. Certainly, uh, this would, whatever we decide is almost certainly gonna go to the state Supreme Court for their opinion on it. But I just can't get around that.
Comes down to interpreting something written a while back, digging into the original intent as best we can. And I'm, I'm believing, yeah, I, there's nothing in there requiring the sending district. There's nothing in there saying that they have to. Yeah, I, I, I. This is, yeah, it's very difficult to.
It is.
I'm going back to what I believe was the intent of the legislation when it's written, but, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, if there was truly an intent for the district that the student is coming from to have to have passed open enrollment, I think it would be more explicit. I mean, I would say, it is like there's a chain of inference to get to that. That feels to me like counter toward the original intent of the larger piece of legislation, what the law said when it was the enmeshed charter school and open enrollment.
I will point out that the title of the statute is open enrollment.
Right.
Yeah, partially.
Yeah, I mean, there's, they, they just couldn't point to anything in the statute that said, if we don't adopt an open enrollment statute, we can block our kids from going to an open enrollment district at our school. There's nothing, there's nothing saying that. And I think the clear, clearly in the legislation, they could op, they could accomplish an open enrollment district, create an open enrollment school, and then say, and zero percent of our kids can be, that's well out in statute. But outside of adopting that program, it doesn't say you can do that. So, you know, maybe the Supreme Court would, would have a different interpretation of that than that's how I read it. All right.
So to get to that end, I make a motion and, correct me, if it doesn't accomplish that end, I move the state board accepts the hearing officer's report and rejects the findings.
Um, reject the hearing officer's report.
Reject the report.
Yeah. And find in favor of the student.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, look at the state board of education, reject the hearing officer's report and find for the student.
And find what, Ian?
For the student.
I want to reject the, reject the report and the recommendation of the hearing officer.
If we reject the report of the hearing officer, does that seem like we're saying like, it's procedurally, I want to make sure this is tight?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So does, did typically, she did.
Let's give us a, um.
That's why.
It doesn't give that option.
That's why this is.
Well, I mean, so the hearing officer, uh, options are, um, accept the report, adopt the hearing, uh, adopt the recommendation or reject the report and the recommendation. So, let me go back.
But it says reject the accepts the July.
Yeah, it's a little.
Poorly.
Poorly written, yeah.
Hence my question.
Yeah. We can take a second to review this.
We're lawyers, we're better vacation.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe you have nice.
I messaged her too, so I'll see.
Okay.
Oh.
My concern is if we reject the report, it's ten months, it's like we're landing on back to the old.
Yeah.
No, I don't, I don't think so.
I'd like, I'd.
I mean.
I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah, no, I mean, we can reject, but this basically rejecting is fine.
That poorly written second motion, is it a challenge?
Make rewritten legislation and a.
An awfully written recommendation. Two for two.
I think we have to reject the report, uh, because.
We decline the report, would that be a vote of war?
Well, I think we, typically, we reject the report and the recommendation. As I'm reading his report, you know, he has findings of law that we're disagreeing with. So I think we, typically, we do this and reject the report and the recommendation. We accept the report, we're basically saying. We accept the report, we're basically saying we accept his legal conclusions, uh, but not his recommendation, and we're not doing that in this case, so.
Right.
So I, I think your initial, your, your motion should be reject the report and the recommendation and find in favor of the student.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
Alright, second, if I fill, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, well, I think we'll certainly find out from, uh, we just did it.
Oh, okay.
We rejected the report and the recommendation.
Your face is not.
Do they need to find that there's an open enrollment school, is the question.
Yeah, I, I need to take, I need to take a moment and look at it.
Okay, we can always come back.
Okay.
And found it, and, and found it in favor of the student. So that was the wording of it. Okay.
Sounds like I was upset stolen by the teacher.
Yeah, I did too, yeah, alright, um, okay, so we're moving right along, we're still in the public hearing.
Do we want to do the charter school kids?
They are next, that's correct, well, we.
Well, you don't have a public hearing.
No, I mean, we, these are all public hearings which we're in, so charter schools are next.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So we just keep going.
I know Ian's gonna be.
I know I need a break.
Do we need a break? Do you guys want to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we are in, uh, I'll tell you what, we're in a public hearing, so.
At least a five minute one.
Somebody shows up?
Let's, that, let's take stagger breaks.
Okay.
I'm gonna, let somebody be here.
I got it first. Um, so.
Well, you're still here, technically you're not, not here.
So it's on there. So I'm gonna keep the public hearing, I'm not gonna gamble with being close, just go take a break and we'll take a little.
I'll come find you if someone shows up.
I think we did that right. It did me usually well, I don't think they.
Let me just, I have to keep this rolling.
Because I'm working, but I'll put them on mute anyway.
I like the, uh, I like the.
The ones up there.
Not working.
Oh, they're not, oh, they don't.
Okay.
Yeah, not to smear as much, but it, but it looks almost like a.
Yeah.
So we're still live?
Yeah, we're live.
Okay.
We're just coming the other end.
Comparing things. I have one here that I really like.
That's one of these, if you want me to go.
No, that's fine, I, I'll sign it with the same one, but, I mean, this is. I like the, the one I had in, fell out, I don't still have it, but I like the little sharpies.
That is the problem.
Little sharpies are. Except, um, you don't want baseball autographed sharpie, you want a baseball autographed ball.
So Andrew, do you want to try anything?
Does the sharpie watch fade?
So I can keep it running, you're just gonna turn the whole system on.
Yeah, it just, it fades, you know, just it'll smear and fade.
Yep, yeah, you can, you can do that, um, let me just message everybody, go ahead and do that and I'll just let them know.
So. Almost all of my exciting ballpoint, but I have one that I got back in the nineties, one of my favorite players, and it's signed in the sharpie, and.
Give it worth it.
Yeah, it's like, ah.
I wonder if it looks like a paper.
Yeah, you don't want to do that. You keep it, it just fades over time, like that's the problem.
Keep it out of the sun.
Yeah, you gotta keep it out of the sun, uh, I have, uh, a baseball show a couple years ago, and I got one, um, and it's really.
So if you buy it, you go to the game.
I, I buy it usually, but, or I'll go to a show and then, but I got, um, girls throwing it, because I can do baseball show, and he signed it in ballpoint. And I immediately, I had a bag full of stuff, and I, so the ball comes in, it's all across the back, when you buy it, so I put it back in there, and then I acted with it, and then I signed it. Fortunately, I got another one in there, so it's all good, but, uh, yeah, I was like, just smudged.
I have a technical difficulty, since I've been quietly, Diana, I've been working, working it in the background.
Taking care of, thank you.
Okay.
Hi, everybody, yeah, you can, you can all see me.
So I'll email that in.
Okay, that's fine, and if you wanna come next month, sorry, I didn't know that.
No, it's before then, yeah.
Yeah, sorry about that, sometimes it's not always clear.
It should be clearer.
I have to stand on the chair and actually. Yeah. But we're trying to.
Yeah, I don't want to send a free form agenda.
I don't, I don't know what's going on.
And that just creates more problems.
The buttons disappeared, like literally.
They're gone.
They're marked. So it's just.
It's just you two.
Like even doing a hard reset.
That's fine.
Lucky you, lunch is here by the way too.
Howard is trying to do his duty and make sure he sees people, the board downs, all his board.
Yeah, I figure you gotta have a board member here.
The only thing I haven't tried is like not plugging it.
Oh, I gotta go back.
Right, but, um.
Um, well, let me get out of the chat, I can tell you, we got twenties, well, actually, um, twenty-four people.
Twenty-four? That's pretty good.
It's actually, yeah, it's great.
It's pretty hot.
But I have to say, let me go through. Eleven are our own staff members.
Okay.
Sure, thank you.
Well, I don't know if I wanna turn it.
Did you see Kate that there's food there too late?
What's that?
The food is there, so.
Yeah. I had that great big brownie.
You're still recovering, huh?
I know better, I'm much chocolate, can we get older?
Especially late in the day.
I'm very rarely, I'm constantly, uh, very rarely from down here.
Yeah.
And I have a sweet. Usually I.
At home, you don't do that.
No, I have nobody. I have. And then I have an order now. Uh, cheese. And tangerine, that's my one.
That's it.
Then when I get home.
And when he's, he's so skinny.
Well, then I get home, I run five miles home.
I chew Gary's arm off, right?
And when I get home, Gary cooks, who loves to cook.
Yeah.
And, boy, can I, can I.
Chow down. Yeah, but you have an email day, so.
Every star.
I could, nothing, I could sit down and eat a whole steak.
Well, that's okay, 'cause Phil and I could sit down and eat a whole day too.
Oh, yeah.
On top of a, a regular lunch or something.
That's exactly it.
For, for Easter, Gary made scallop, homemade scallop potato.
Mmm.
I thought you were gonna say scallops, just period.
Scallop's a good.
No, we had a great pan, oh my god.
Easter is like the only time we have.
We just don't eat ham or anything, but like.
I don't even eat it at Easter, we're, we're a lamb family, so.
I love that growing up, there was lamb, it's always lamb growing up.
Lamb or I need a deer meat, no thank you.
Really?
Not the way that I.
Thirty years ago, I've had every deer, every moose, every pheasant, every.
You're like, where'd you shoot this one?
There's so many ways you can cook deer meat.
Right, I think I tried to maul myself.
Deer jerky, deer jerky.
Oh, yeah. It's funny turkey, when you shoot them, you know, we're so accustomed to the stores.
Plump one, yeah.
You know, cook them for four hours, right?
Yeah.
So we get this, they, uh, got a twenty-two, twenty-two pounder.
Yeah.
But it's not like twenty-two counter in the store, is it, trade counter of what you get?
I found that out.
As opposed to, a trade counter that you get, that you hunt, they gotta cut a lot of pieces off, it's not about like an eight pounder.
The first time they ever shot, he ever shot a, uh, turkey, oh, wow, okay, you know, boom, boom, boom.
Cooked almost thirty of them in our yard the other day.
Cooked them according to, you know, pretty much, oh my god, came out like an other. The second one he got, I figured it out.
So we had, uh, was cleaning out the garden, vegetable garden beds this weekend, and a nest of baby bunnies in there.
Baby, are you?
So those are terrible, yeah, I mean, they get everywhere, so, of course, my son, who's seven, loves animals, he's just like, oh, they're so cute, and so like.
Did you say like, and they have them?
Oh, I know, yeah, so, we put a, we put a, no, it's fine, we put a hunting camp on them, it's gonna, if the mother comes back, then we'll figure out what to do, if she doesn't come back, we gotta get. So, we got the hunting camp on there, the next day, we're kind of like, during work at school, the dog's got it, and just, so.
My wife's on the side, so.
Here next week, so.
She's like, yes, let us, we'll survive.
And she was just, yeah, very, very concerned about her son, and we got sensitive, so it was just like, I really wanna watch the web, like, the video, like, she.
They're in public hearings.
Oh, sure. Okay, oh, wow.
I don't know what's gonna happen.
And you caught it all.
And you got it all, oh, yeah, they were all over.
Okay, alright, cool, thank you.
So one is that the Joberman pit mix, and the other is, like, the real, the Joberman pit is also a web, I think he was following the puppy. The puppy is like a collie, um, lab mix, and she's, uh, got in there, and then the big dog's like, oh, I guess we can do that.
So my dog beheaded four, four, um, not badlers, or, you know, those nasty ones that, that live in the stone walls around your house.
We don't like the hillbush for the whole thing.
Oh.
Chipmunks.
No, it's like a possum, like, not a possum, but, but the, but they, these things are, they're, they're mean.
A possum. Oh, like honey badgers?
They're like honey badger.
Not, not honey badger, no, um, one of the.
Well, no, no, not that big, no, more like, just a muskrat, kinda, like, why am I, but anyway, we found the four bodies, we never found the heads.
Yeah.
Wow.
The thing snapped at her and she just reacted, and, you know, snapping me and I'll, I'll snap it. She, she was young, she was, she was.
I must worry about.
Under, under two years old.
My dog has a taste of blood, and I was like, oh, there.
Guys, why am I, I don't need a board member on this side, why are you ganging up against him? I'm like, I'm by myself.
I don't know. There we all start.
Yeah.
Okay, little clique going on, that's fine.
It's alright, you'll, you'll be invited, just be patient, take your time.
Okay.
One day. When I hit.
Come over.
I'm just not cool like.
We're like shrinking rapidly.
Yeah.
It's like, we're gonna have a two-person quorum if we don't.
Kate, when are you done?
Book last.
When are you done?
Today?
Two months ago.
You've said that every time we've seen you.
Oh, yeah, no, I got different stuff.
I think you got another.
You have to be like, like Brian and just hang out.
It's a kind of, I'll flip right out, I'll submit it. June's a high note, just temper enough, so. I get a break about, remember?
Yeah. You're saving your sandwich or salad to go home?
It's not a bad.
Saving your lunch to go make sure.
I just wanna give you a heads up that I figured out they messed up your, for the Chicago trip, so I'm working on getting it fixed now.
Yeah.
I'm hungry, I would have been.
Well, they have you booked on a flight, getting there on the sixteen, and a flight leaving on the nineteen, they have Christina Luntz getting there on the seventeen, and you only have a hotel for the seventeen into the eighteen.
Well, I can drink a lot of water.
So I guess you're sleeping at the airport the other days, I'm not sure, so I'm fixing it, this is what happens when I'm not involved in. I was like reviewing everything, I'm like, these don't make sense, what's your night? So, we're gonna probably switch your flight from the sixteenth to the seventeenth, so you can fly out, fly in with Christina, that was what they were supposed to do, and they did.
Allow, turn it.
But then I have to get our hotel from the seventeenth through the nineteenth, so you can check out on the nineteenth, because right now they have you checking out on the nineteenth, I'm like, that's not. I don't know, I just noticed it.
Oh, look at that.
That's very heavy heated.
You guys are split, you, you don't have these.
I may have to wrap it up, but.
Well, it's not, we could find someone to eat it.
Okay.
You're not feeling it?
No, I had that brownie, the brownie, it's a brownie.
I'm not touching that, but, yes.
Oh, I want.
Just skillet cookie?
I know better too.
So we can't go too late today, do you have a limit to thirty? I have a local school board meeting at five. Although they're still in forum with three people now, right?
Okay, now I'm.
Are you, where are you headed tomorrow?
Later I, when I come to Laconia, that's my last stop.
I just wanted to see the poster, I did a tribute.
Can you start the video, Ian, so I can see what it looks like?
I would have given you a key and you could have just stayed in the house. Yeah.
You know, it gets old.
Traveling?
Oh, yeah.
It's that one.
Since when is that one the one that?
I used to work in Boston.
It never works before, it was, it's the one that's been not working.
Wait, but none of the views are changing. Are we on the right?
Hold on.
And we still have that camera on.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, no, hello. Well, that one's the only one that does the traffic. Do both the cameras work?
Yeah, hopefully that's. Yeah.
But, uh, did anybody show up, is anybody here to speak on ED five oh four dot oh four, I just think we're just the authorization?
No.
Okay.
I must say, I checked the sign, I'd sign in and no, nobody was signed in just a minute ago.
Nobody's here, okay, so we're gonna close that hearing and open the hearing on elementary education teacher, KD five oh seven dot eleven, is anybody here to speak on that?
Do we, did you check the, the signup sheet?
I just did, and there was nobody there on the sheet, there's only one, um, it's the, it's the continuation, I think, is the only thing that anyone signed up for, and that doesn't start from one.
Okay, no, no, sir. This is back on again, this projector.
Yeah, as soon as she gets.
Alright, so what I think we're gonna do is start with charter schools, we do wanna get through, um, with some efficiency, so, um, microsociety is up first.
How they're with the charter school office, um, and it's microsociety academy charter public school, I hear for renewal as well as amendment, Amy Bottomley, executive director, and Barbara Halevi, board chair.
Welcome, so I just wanna, because we, we do have more hearings and stuff, um, wanna make sure we're thorough here, but, um, I think everybody's read the materials, so if you have anything you wanna add to that, great, but anything we need, like, rereading this stuff.
I could hear Drew, is, this is the.
Microsociety, yeah.
Thank you.
I think just a quick update on where we are, where from five years ago now, we're really excited to say, one thing we've been able to do is purchase our building, which has really, um, helped our financials be, you know, consistent and stable.
Okay. Yeah. Great.
We've also purchased a second facility now, thanks to the grant that we were recipients of for expansion, we're gonna be able to buy all the supplies we need, and so we're excited, um, for that process to happen, we're in the midst of, of that work right now, but, um, our goal is to reach, which we already aborted approval for, for four hundred and thirty-two students when it's all said and done.
How many, do you have now?
Three hundred and four currently today, we have a modular that's holding on to a few kids, so thank you, yes.
That's awesome. Congratulations. Really good. You were, I remember your application, and your concept was so interesting and valuable, um, to just society.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, how, just really quickly, um, growing, you got your own buildings, um, what do you think the next five years look like?
Hopefully a little, some fewer, fewer projects would be nice, like, reach the, reach the end of the expansion, you know, goals that we have at the moment would, would be good, but, um. Yeah. We would like to summer off. Yeah. So our real goal is to make a more robust middle school program, we, we feel like we're very strong K five right now, we see more turnover in our middle school, one, because it's s- small numbers, we're not able to do leveled classes, offers of more robust art microsociety programs, so we're looking really at, at making that stronger, specifically, we're gonna have, if, for those of you not familiar with our concept, we're about real world applications, so students are working in a period every day in a job, so they, we have currency, banks, we have government, we have our judicial system. So, students are working in a period every day in a job, so they, we have currency, banks, we have government, we have our judicial system. And entrepreneurs running their own, um, businesses, uh, student-run businesses. So, they also get to earn a paycheck, pay taxes, and use their hard-earned money on their days off, where they get to go, um, purchase goods and services from, uh, other student-run businesses. So, in short, they're learning the whys behind school, so they're taking what they're applying in the classroom every day, and being able to apply those skills in an actual job, and, and through our school. So, at the middle school level, we're finding they wanna do more advanced concepts, so we're looking at, um, elective courses. So, we're hoping to have like a financial literacy course, and an entrepreneurial course, and things like that. So, we're gonna have more elective-based, so it can be more student-driven in their decisions and their interest areas. So, that's what we're hoping to tie in in our middle school program as we grow.
Do you be open to a visit or a tour?
Absolutely. We are always open for it, yes. The students love to show off what they're doing, you can ask them all the questions, they're very proud of their work. And it's really our carrot. We have amazing, um, attendance, like, we average about ninety-five percent attendance or more every year. And it's really, we attribute to the microsociety program, cause they don't wanna disappoint their coworkers. You know, they have to show up and be at the job or in their paycheck. It's really the, the carrot that.
So, let me ask you that, and I don't, wanna, listen to this time, this. One of the things that we see, and it's, it's a issue that schools of all types are struggling with, is bullying, and, um. I think part of that seems to me, and I want your thought on this, because you're addressing that kind of thing, right? Getting kids to feel like they're in this together, like, they work as team members, like, they're part of one core culture, and one group. Instilling that kind of culture in a school, where the students view themselves as, I don't wanna say a family, cause I don't think that's the right word. But, as part of a cohesive community, where you just, it's not acceptable to pick on another, like, so whatever your mascot is, you know, for example. We're not gonna, you don't pick on another Wolverine, right? Whatever it is, like, just instilling that kind of culture seems like such a big challenge. Nobody seems to be getting it quite right. So, we, for you, in just getting those kids to feel like, hey, we're all part of a team, we're all together, um, how, how do you go about just getting that sense of togetherness for your students?
Well, one thing that's nice about our program is it is across the, all grade levels, so they are mixed in their jobs. So, you have your older students, the mentors, our business owners, our managers, with the younger students. Um, we also have, students have decided on a constitution and laws, and they find what we will say is a messy problem, like a societal problem. And so, they'll go forward and propose a bill that our government will go into congressional session and debate, and then pass into law or not. Um, to solve these issues that they're, they're having in their own school community, or in their, in our microcity, as we like to call it, microcity. So, they're a little more empowered. It's also with our judicial system, there are certain laws that will go right to court or right to a fine. And it's more powerful, when you have to face the jury of your peers, than just being sent to the principal's office. So, I think all that kinda lends to that community feel that they're, have their own ownership and say on how their community is run.
I think it, it does work in both ways, too. You know, the younger students definitely have all these opportunities to interact with older, older students. And so, they see where they're leading, you know, like, oh, I'm gonna be able to apply to be a business owner in fourth grade, and that's like a big thing that they've sort of seen happening early on. And then the older students, I don't, take a lot of pride, I think, in, in training and teaching and mentoring.
And we put a lot of emphasis on those positions. You need to be an upstander. You know, you, if you're someone that's constantly getting in trouble, having a detention, then that, you're probably not gonna be someone who's gonna be considered for that position. So, they learn these things young and know that what they wanna aspire to, and what it takes to get to that leadership position. Now, we're not buoyed without, you know, the electronics at night and all the stuff that happens on that we're dealing with. But I'd say in the day-to-days, it's, it is less, and it is more of a community field.
That's impressive. Alright, that's great.
Could I just point out a couple of things?
Sure, you can.
I think it'd be nice for the public to, to, um, listen to your achievements, um, as a charter school, is that, uh, you have two, currently, as this report was two ninety-seven. Now, how many do you have?
Three oh four today.
Three hundred and four. New Hampshire SAS scores exceed state average ELA math and science, a particular note. Math proficiency is nine percent higher than the state average, and science proficiency is twenty-four percent higher than state average. Um, let's see, you have schools diverse, diverse population, eleven percent ELL, ELL. Uh, positive school environment, uh, purchased a new building, um, and you have a sound fiscal management. Very good, excellent. And overall, uh, organization goals are well thought out, and school is making substantial progress, progress towards achieving their goals. And the other one was positive school culture, parents are highly enthusiastic about the school. Uh, you had great feedback letters, what I read, um, staff were engaged in functioning, um, and there were no areas of improvement. So, congratulations, and thank you for doing such a great job. I did take a look at your, um, I only had one question, Drew. I mean, on the budget.
Only one, that's pretty.
I know.
Budget hog.
I'll probably re-answer it.
Um, and I'm not sure, I, I know, I was supposed to ask Tal, and I could've did something else. Um, debit service interest, and the figure is ninety-six thousand, what is that?
That's probably our debt service, our.
Our, uh, HIPAA, we have a direct loan with HIPAA, pretty sure that's what that is.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Cause some of the, these are broken down, they, they will, I don't know what, what you're putting under what.
We certainly have, like, good mortgage payments and the loan payments, I'm assuming that that's the interest payment, one of them.
Yeah, when I hear the ninety-seven number, that's the HIPAA loan, but then we also have our mortgage payments, correct?
Okay, um.
Congratulations on owning your building.
Yeah, it's been a bit of a road.
From a charter school perspective, you have the financial wherewithal to have the stability. Your, your school and the business at the same time, and you're making it happen, so that's something you should be very proud of.
Thank you. I attribute a lot, we have a very strong board, we have, their financial sense, their business sense really supports me in the operation, so I'm thankful for that. We're eleven, twelve strong right now, so, which is pretty good for, you know, I'm hearing number wise for a board at charter school, so we're really proud of that.
You do need to be recognized, though, but you did a great job.
Thank you, yes, a lot of credit.
Could you, um, share again, um, what your admittance policy is?
So, admissions, we go with the charter law lottery, so it's a blind lottery. Um, our application is not asking anything except your name and your grade. We have questions around microsociety, what job interest you might wanna have, um, you know, the New Hampshire residency requirements, but that's it. And so, then, once they're in, then we'll, our, um, when they're doing their, the rest of their paperwork, that's when we ask things like, do you have a nine P or a five oh four? So, we don't, you know, it's the blind lottery process. So, we have our lottery in March, we let everyone know about two weeks if they were accepted, or what their waitlist order is. And then after that, anyone can apply, continue to apply, they just get put at the bottom of the waitlist.
What does your waitlist look like now?
Depends on the, yeah, we.
There's a wide variety of grade.
Yeah, we average between a hundred and a hundred fifty applicants a year, it depends, this is a lower year. Um, generally, we've been around one fifty, and kindergarten by far our largest, sixth grades tends to be our second largest. Um, so it depends on the grade, but our, our waitlists are fairly long in kindergarten, just to start. Cause they tend to get, once they get in, they stay with us, at least through fifth grade, we have really strong numbers there.
Wonderful. How many on your waiting list?
Yeah, so that we, so right now, we've probably accepted about forty students in three spaces, we don't have a lot of turnover. And so, we probably have about eighty on the waitlist right now. Nexting grades, yeah.
And we, and we do have, you know, sibling priority in the lottery, too, so families, once one child's there, families will stay together.
And staff, so we, we do prioritize staff, children, and then sibling children, and then it's everyone else.
Very good.
I move that the state part of education approve the amendment of microsociety academy charter school.
Second.
Yeah, why don't you say that?
There's two, there's an amendment and an amendment.
Okay, what, what, let's do the, um.
Renewal.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it matters, do the renewal first, and then.
Um, I move that the state part of education approve the renewal of Microsoft Academy.
Second. I got you.
Microsociety Academy.
Microsociety.
We're not quite Microsoft.
Not that big yet.
No.
All in favor?
Wait, wait, we had a second from Jim, right? You seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I move the state part of education approve the amendment of microsociety, microsociety, anyone else have trouble saying that word?
We go by MAX, yeah, it's our acronym, MAX is how we have.
Academy Charter Schools Charter.
Alright, so, do you need a second for that one? Amendment charter, from Jen, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate time.
So, we got.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
The amendment?
Yes, that, did.
We did.
They just did it.
All did.
Thank you, thanks again, thank you very much.
Okay, Spark Academy, see what we can do in twelve minutes.
Again, Tal Bear Charter School Office, I'm gonna make a quick, uh, John, the school director for Spark Academy Charter School for their five-year renewal, and all of his team members.
So, I have with me Dan Larchell, he's the department head of MCC, and he's also the founder of Spark Academy. Um, and behind me, I have, um, Caitlin Bundell, who does my financial accounting. Um, and Anne Williams, my board chair, and Jennifer Larchell, parent and staff. So. Um, so, Spark Academy, um, you guys have read it and know who we are and all that stuff. But basically, we're trying to find ways to get kids interested in their skills in advanced manufacturing, technology skills, finding those careers. And getting students to use those skills in the fields of industries that are growing. And one of the things, there's a lot of companies that need those type of support and help, and so we try to find ways to find their strengths in doing that. With the access of using MCC's campus at the same time, so, um, so that's a little bit of what we do. Um, getting students into the industries has been a challenge, because there's laws that say they can't go until they're eighteen. So, um, Dan has been pretty creative and come up with some different ideas of how we kinda worked around some of those things, so I'll let Dan kinda talk about her.
Sure, um, again, we're really heavy on internships and apprenticeships, uh, and now, our first pre-apprenticeship for Tool and Diner Maker, it's on packaging. Um, if you haven't seen this before, anybody seen these, was the XRP robot. Uh, so this was, uh, six Spark Academy students designed this with DECA and, uh, WPI. And we made six hundred of them and passed them out worldwide, uh, to, at First Global.
When he says he made them, he actually made them at First Global.
Physically, they're all, this is all a three-D printed chassis, it's low cost, this, this robot costs less than sixty dollars.
How, how old are the students who designed and made it?
Uh.
Range price?
Seventeen, sixteen, seventeen. And they did it as their senior project, and the six students that I chose, uh, were actually doing a capstone project to complete their two-year degree while they're in high school.
Alright.
Um, so that product.
One of them gonna be a mechanical engineer?
Uh, some of them mechanical engineers, some of them are electrical, we have them scattered, some of them went into biofabrication. Um, we actually have a pre, we have an apprenticeship with, uh, Army with biofabrication, and one of the Spark kids, Paulson, is there right now. Uh, so that's cool. Um, again, this is the, this is the final product, this is the prototype. Uh, we are now manufacturing, uh, five thousand five hundred of these, uh, for the governor, uh, to give to all the middle schools and public schools. And we are the prime location for the print farm, and we're duplicating that print farm at Lakes Region and White Mountains, and working with the CTE centers around there. So, again, this is real-life manufacturing, we have a business in the school. Um, we made some little fidget toys, you guys each have one, uh, you know, and these work for our career fair. Um, again, we now have twenty-four printers at the print farm, and we can make anything we want.
Thank you.
So, it's a, it's neat having a business inside of a, a school, where you can design and manufacture a complete product.
Couple, for the sake of time, a couple of quick questions. Um, how many students do you have today in the program?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two?
Mm-hmm.
How many will you have, or to aspire to have?
The max, the max would be a hundred and twenty. Uh, we take thirty kids each year, and with the process, we try to, if they leave, which the goal is not to, but they leave, we don't fill that spot. Because there's a process to go through some of it.
Is, is a hundred and twenty financially sustainable?
Yes.
Okay. I love the partnership with Community College System, I think that's, that's, that's an awesome model. What was your enrollment last year, or the year before?
Seventy-six, I think.
So, it's kinda that slow and steady.
It's, it's growing, yeah, because we don't fill second, third, and fourth years, it's always thirty-first years. We're bottom up.
You can only have attrition.
Yeah, we only have, we only go up. And it's, cause of our cohort model, we only take thirty students, and it's fifteen students per cohort, and that means do the first two years of the program as a cohort.
I, I just, I always have a little bit of hesitation with lower enrollments being sustainable long-term. I do trust the reason of Caitlin Bundell and the financial advice. I'm just, I typically.
So, on the, on the campus, right, so you have. Yeah, so we have full access to every program at MCC, so in the third year, the students can go and be wilders, they can be etudes, they can be graphic designers.
So, your, your model's fantastic, I love that.
It's an amazing.
Yeah, like a bridge hug. These guys, we're, we're too busy messing with your fidget.
Yeah, sorry, it was, it was a distraction sport.
See, see what you do?
Excellent tactic.
They were, um, Kate, did you have any questions for?
Um, I did, you're right with me here.
You said that you chose six, are there any other kids that can join in making these?
Oh, sure, so that's the best part, the six were the kids that designed this as their senior project.
Yeah.
Okay, we have twenty-two kids that are manufacturing these as an ELO. So, we've had a very extensive ELO program, where kids actually learn how to use the, all the printers, and maintain all the printers. And then we have packaging, we have quality control, um, and then we have delivery. Uh, we're also doing a bunch of the professional development around this for a lot of the teachers, and we host that at MCC and Spark Academy. So, yes, we, we try and make it as hands-on as possible, and it's really cool, because some of the kids that maybe weren't going down in engineering or technology track kinda cycled back in their fourth year, uh, third year and fourth year to this, because they gravitated towards the assembly process and the actual manufacturing. It's one of the things I appreciate the most, cause not everybody's designed to be an engineer.
Right.
Uh, and my focus of my program at the college is technicians.
Right.
Cause that's really what my workforce is looking for now, and really great technicians make really great engineers.
You're teaching them a lot more, you're teaching them how to measure, you're teaching them a lot of that.
Everything, problem solved.
A lot of people don't know how to register, believe me, um.
How many staff do you have?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, Sarah? High, that includes all paid employees, so.
Yeah.
Doing the math in my head, she's doing the detailed work, but.
So, each year, we've been able to reduce the cost per pupil, and trying to look at what that is. Um, and s, some of the things that we're using is, there are college professors that come and teach our classes. And then we, we can help reduce some of that cost that way as well.
Because of the, the revenues that you take in, you're slightly over a million dollars, maybe one point one, one point two, based on the funding.
Yeah.
Then you have thirteen employees, you have whatever benefits, you have your overhead, you have all of this, that, I go back to the sustainability question.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, guys, we got four minutes till the public hearing starts, so if there's any, uh, thing that's gonna affect your vote, it's good for you to bring it up. You guys are doing great.
Just wanted to compliment you on your addressing your math issues and class size, and being proactive in that way, that you're committed. Alright, you ready for possible motion?
Ready.
I move that the state part of education approve the renewal of Spark Academy Chartered Public School.
Second. Second, Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
Good job, thanks guys.
Awesome, enough, congrats.
My daughter's looking to fly a helicopter, and I think she could probably use one, just to help her stay focused.
Go way over.
I had a chance.
We were just laughing.
All right, so we've, we've got three minutes till this thing starts. Um, do we wanna just, is, anybody from Coastal Waters here? Are we just gonna accept that surrender? There's, there's, yeah, do we wanna just accept?
Is that a non-public session?
No, it's just a, it's just a surrender. It's not a hearing or thing. Do we wanna just, let's take that up and just.
I move that State Board of Education to approve the amendment to the, no, so.
Accept the surrender.
Accept the surrender. On the Great Bay Charter School, I think the right one.
No, that's Coastal Waters.
Hello, everyone. And it's not North Star. Um, so many.
One right after.
Yeah, we are. Right after North Star. Um, I move that the Board of Education accepted the surrender of the Coastal Waters Charter.
Second. Second from Phil. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um.
Was it a sad eye?
A sad eye. Uh, North Star Academy opening extension request. I don't think this needs updating. Do you find anybody have any discussion of this one? They're just gonna push back their opening date.
No.
She doesn't seem to see. Yeah.
I appreciate them doing that.
Yeah, it's, it's, it makes no sense if either.
That's insane, man.
Do you have a motion on that?
Yep, I make a motion to accept North Star Academy's extension request.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That gets us right up to the wall here. So we're not gonna get Great Bay in before the hearing starts.
These poor guys.
Three oh six dot four six, continuation of three oh six dot oh one to three oh six dot two five. So who we have?
Megan Tuttle and Herb are up first and Julie Turner is on deck. When I tell you you're on deck, that just means you can come on and sit in the front row and be ready to go. You're up first.
No, 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 no.
You still just get three minutes even though you're two of ya.
Yeah, I'll go quick. He's actually speaking. Um, so for the record, Megan Tuttle, President NEA New Hampshire, representing about seventeen thousand educators across the state. I was here last week and said I'd be back, so we are. I did bring Herb this time. He's gonna speak. I do just want to turn this in for the record that we have a petition with almost five hundred signatures. Um, and there's more coming in. This is just where we were at as of this morning, supporting strong public school standards in New Hampshire. So I'll give this to Angela. She can be copied for everybody.
Great. Good afternoon. My name is Herb Richardson. I'm the coordinator for public education and school support for NEA New Hampshire. I also teach in Southern New Hampshire University's doctoral program for educational leadership. I have experience as a classroom teacher, principal, as well as working in the main Department of Education. And as the Director of Shared Leadership for the Council of Chief State School Officers. You get to my age, you have a lot of experience. President Megan Tuttle and I were honored to work with the National Center for Competency-Based Education in the DOE since last November to make recommendations about what should be in the minimum standards. While working for the Council of Chief State School Officers, I was a member of collaborative committees of educators from throughout the country who developed national teacher standards and professional standards for educational leaders. I came away from my work on those committees, understanding what a challenge it is to reach consensus with a document such as New Hampshire's minimum standards. From my work on standards documents, I took away several lessons that I think can be applied to our work with the three oh sixes. One of the first lessons is the need for current updated standards. I commend the New Hampshire Department of Education and the National Center for Competency-Based Education. And everyone who was a part of the three oh six work group for their efforts to update the standards. As we are all well aware, the contexts surrounding education are rapidly changing due to changes in society, technology, and even in our students. My belief in the utility of updated current standards makes me concerned about the age of some of our current college and career-ready standards, which are represented in the second half of the three oh sixes. Christine Downing, who you'll hear from later, will likely address the current standards and their age and the need to update them. For my work in the standards, I also learned the importance of clearly articulating what is required versus what is optional. One of the discussions we had in the three oh six work group was whether curricular requirements should be permissive or requirements. I believe they're a concept and knowledge that every graduate from a New Hampshire high school should possess. By inserting permissive language that a curriculum area may contain certain concepts and topics, makes it possible for districts to pick and choose what graduating students should know and be able to do instead of clearly articulating that required knowledge, skills, and habits of mind. So imagine each of us starting driver education schools.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we've got it written out. We'll take your written comments and.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
We can email. I don't know if you wanna give them that or we can email it.
If you email it, it'd be great.
What's easier?
Yeah.
Email it would be phenomenal.
Email is great.
We're very email-based.
And you wanna email me this? Is this easy-mailable, the list that you gave me?
Um, I think so.
That'd be wonderful. And if not, yeah, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Herb.
Okay, so we've got Julie Turner is up and Jessica Spillers is on deck.
Frank, when you do that, I feel like I'm at the fourth round.
Oh, sorry. I'm trying to keep rolling now.
We're on deck.
I know, I feel like I should do some warm-ups.
Where you're gonna do some warm-ups. Yeah, whatever you gotta do, right?
All stretched out, right? Good afternoon, Chairman Klein, Commissioner Edelblut, and members of the State Board. I am Julie Turner. I'm a resident of Manchester, a parent of three public school students. I am an educator with a New Hampshire teacher's license and a representative for Ward One on the Manchester Board of School Committee. Today I come before you to ask for your reconsideration of the latest version of the Ed three oh sixes. As this board may recall, you've seen my signature on submitted letters dated April tenth, twenty twenty-three, and March eleventh, twenty twenty-four, requesting specific changes to the three oh sixes. I've brought copies of those, uh, to submit as reminders, but they include requests for change in the following areas. Reinserting the word local and striking the word may and replacing with shall throughout the document. Requiring a New Hampshire, New Hampshire's teacher, teaching certificate for our educators in public schools. Placing class size maximums and reintegrating the word equity into the document. Tightening up and using explicit language surrounding competencies as well as learning levels. And reinstating requirements for elementary art, music, and physical education. This is not an exhaustive list, but a quick refresher. I represent myself today, but would like to point out that those two letters were submitted a year and an election apart with signatures of support from twenty of my fellow school board colleagues. There's an overwhelming amount of concern over the proposed changes to the three oh sixes. As I speak before you now, I'm reminded of evenings when I serve on the school board. And I listen to proposed plans and hear public comment. As an educator, I feel most confident weighing in on items, content, and comments related to curricula, class size, educational policy, writing initiatives, STEM proposals, et cetera. To be honest, sometimes I find myself out of my league when asked to weigh in on decisions that are outside my area of proficiency. Decisions on managing, oops, excuse me, to be, uh, like Manchester's recent decision on bringing transportation in-house into our district. Decisions on managing a fleet of buses, hiring a complement of drivers, and staffing a transportation manager, coordinator, and dispatcher make me realize that I am not a specialist in this area. I lean on people who have more experience than I do to make informed decisions. I, like you, have confidence that I am an intelligent person who can listen, ask questions, and rely on feedback from those in the field. After reviewing your meet the board page on the DOE website, I understand that many of you may be in that same position. As appointed members of this board, you have the great responsibility to make an informed decision on a document that may be outside your prowess. I ask you, professionals, smart people, esteemed business leaders and owners, journalists, former construction workers, and professional development strategists, please listen and hear. You've been presented with countless testimonies rejecting this updated draft of the three oh sixes. You have heard from folks with boots on the ground explaining how this draft erodes public education. New Hampshire educators, principals, superintendents, and school boards have all given feedback that the three oh sixes need work. They are not ready for their New Hampshire debut. Please wait. Please reapprove the current three oh six rules until the questions are cleared up, the rules are more intentional, and the multitude of concerns are addressed. The students of the six oh three deserve that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Jessica Spillers is up and Jim O'Connell is on deck.
Hello and thank you for taking the time to listen to my concerns. My name is Jessica Spillers. I'm a resident of Manchester, New Hampshire, and a member of the Manchester Board of School Committee. And I'm a mom to two young girls. And I'm testifying today in opposition to the proposed changes of the education three oh six rules. And I need to offer up some information about myself, though, um, that I don't typically disclose. I was homeschooled. And from kindergarten through high school, I was homeschooled. And I don't typically offer up this information about myself because there's a stigma and a general assumption that people who were homeschooled are less educated. Homeschoolers are stereotyped as being overly religious and conservative. People picture women in jean jumpers and culottes, teaching the Bible to their kids around the kitchen table. My experience was far from that. My mother was a high school math and physics teacher. She spent hours poring over lesson plans, researching curriculum to ensure that my brother and I could attend college and be successful. And nonetheless, we ran into jean jumper moms and large families. We encountered folks who were incredibly religious and who used curriculum that only included one perspective. And it was and still is incredibly frustrating how homeschooling education is so wildly inconsistent from family to family. And when I graduated, I hoped the stigma would fade away and that I'd be able to blend in more with my peers, but I was wrong. Because of the effort my mother had put into my education, I excelled, and now I was on the other end of that stigma. Inevitably, professors would ask where I had gone to school and after answering, I would get some backhanded compliments about, wow, you're smart for a homeschooler, or I would have never known that. You blend right in. At first it was reassuring, but it became frustrating because instead of focusing on me, they became focused on what they thought they knew about me. It wasn't about my intelligence. It was about how well I did for where I came from. And they had no understanding of where I came from. Even with employers early on in my career, I experienced the same sort of treatment. And they immediately forgot I had a master's degree and was a published research author. I became that homeschooled girl again. Whether it's inconsistency and vagueness in rules, the interpretations from one place to the next will vary and impact the caliber of education students receive. The changes proposed to the Ed three oh six rules strip basic academic standards, remove class size maximums, and weaken the overall value of a public education in New Hampshire. And here's the thing, I want my girls to have the same rigorous education I had, just through our public school. I understand fully the time and dedication it takes to educate a person well, and I don't have the expertise to replicate what my mother was able to accomplish. What I don't want to happen for my girls is to get lost in a sea of students because maximum class sizes were stripped from the rules. I don't wanna determine how I'm gonna pay for an art class because it's now an optional learning opportunity instead of a required course. And more than anything, I don't want my girls to have to prove their worth and defend the caliber of their education like I did because universities and employers have blacklisted our zip code or attribute negative stereotypes to our school district. I want consistency across the state for our children. They deserve a rigorous education that prepares them for whatever comes next, a job, college, or the military. And I can, am I, may I finish?
No. Wait, three minutes, we're gonna keep the same for everybody. You have written comments that you can leave for us?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Klein and Commissioner Edelblut. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Jim O'Connell. I'm the Vice Chair of the Manchester Board of School Committee. Um, and I'm here today to voice my, uh, opposition to the, uh, proposed changes to the school standards. You know, I think there's a, one, one, one of the points I would like to make is I think that, uh, the, 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 the consultation process, um, I think has been faulty. I don't think, and what I, you know, I don't think that the, the, the voices of, um, my colleagues, for instance, on the Manchester Board of School Committee have been, um, have been heard. And we have delivered statements and responded at various opportunities to come before you or to deliver information. But there's been a lack, I think, of, uh, it seems, from the outside looking in, that those, uh, those cons, those, uh, comments, et cetera, haven't been, um, seriously considered or we know, we know that they haven't affected, uh, change. So, um, I think it's easy sometimes as an largest school district in the state of New Hampshire. It, I think we in Manchester have to be careful not to have an expectation that we should have a special voice or a voice beyond what we deserve. But having said that and recognizing that we are just one-tenth of the state, but we do represent a huge proportion of particular populations when it comes to diversity and need and ELLT learners and, um, the challenges in our district are not repeated generally across the state. But however, the rules made for the state, uh, do affect us and, and affect, in this case, one in ten children in, in the state when it comes to, uh, the, the, the city of Manchester. I just want to reiterate what my colleagues have said and what others will say around the, uh, the general lowering of standards. Um, I frankly don't understand, uh, the rationale for lowering standards. Um, the removal of arts from requirements is a problem. I don't understand that. The, uh, the lowering of the standards or reducing of the standards for maximum class size. Um, there are, uh, the, the, significantly, the change from shall to may is, is a very important difference to me. I think a standard that says may is really not a standard, right? We could recognize it in many places. If you're required to do certain things, uh, when you say may, you automatically imply may not. So automatically a standard that says, the standard is, you may do this, by inference, the standard is also saying just as equally, you may not. So I don't know how the word standard and the word may can exist in the same sentence because one negates the other. So I would, I would ask you to reconsider the, um, the, the three oh sixes. I think they're not ready for primetime and I'd like to see more work done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Bonilla.
Just, just so everybody's clear, we're getting a lot of feedback that, um, the three oh sixes aren't done and we should do more work on them. And we've had presentations showing that we're doing more work on them and that this process is ongoing. And the draft that you have in front of you is not the final draft. Uh, just, it doesn't seem like the information is getting back to even school board of the biggest school district in the state. Despite the fact that the NEA and other groups were involved in this process and know that we're still working on these things. The message doesn't seem to have gotten back to people that these are still a work in process and that we are in fact taking this information in and it's still a, a work in progress. So that should have gotten back to people and apparently it hasn't.
And then, so Jason's up, but Christine Downing, you're gonna be on deck if you're coming up again, so. Go ahead, Jason.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Uh, when I started, my name's, uh, Jason Bonilla. Uh, so I got, so I'm gonna give you a quick context. I got three minutes. I know it's gonna be quick. So I got into politics because my lived experiences were a product of broken policies and systems that were not adequate enough to support my education, especially being an English language learner. What's wild is that my very own zip code predetermined my future, right? And I know that these are, these, they're drafts and they're ongoing, right? So I'm here to just really elevate the stories of these amazing experts on their field. And I know a- all of you have your own experiences as well to add to this. Uh, but it seems like when I read this, it says zip codes are predetermined the futures of our very own children in the state. So now I'm sitting in front of you all, uh, part of one of the big, uh, a part of one of the decision-makers in the biggest city in the state, right? So I am also a school board member representing Ward Five in the city of Manchester. I want to amplify the comments made by my fellow committee members from the Board of School Committee in Manchester. You know, our king, Sean Parr, from Ward Two, has been leading the efforts in ensuring that our feedback gets to you all. And I know you're all reading it. I want you all to see that we're here in person, you know, face to face, that, you know, this, I, we truly all have a commitment to all of our kids. And I know that a lot of you, if you hear my name, you'll hear BIPOC, but also I'm here to really elevate the stories of all of our youth and families. I feel like at this point, there have been a good amount of experts in their fields, families, community leaders, and elected officials who have expressed their concerns. And I, I already said that, many of them are here. Uh, so I'm leaning on their expertise as we make decisions. And I know as policymakers, we all do the same. Um, fortunately, I haven't seen many of the inputs from the various, uh, listening sessions that you've all had. And again, I know they're ongoing. So hopefully in the future, you know, we can get a lot of our collective input incorporated into these next drafts that are seen, um, to the rest of our community. Mine's pretty short. Gracias. I appreciate y'all. And it's good actually to put a face to the names here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So Christine in Robnado is on, uh, on deck.
Christine Downing goes to the bench. Um, just following up from this morning, um, I think we have some good momentum. So I would just encourage us to, you know, let's listen, let's dialogue, let's put forth the best effort we can. I wanna go back to those two students from Hopkinton this morning. Remember? It's about them, right? And we wanna make sure we get that across all our public schools. I also think this interest in the three oh six revisions is a time for us. I also think this interest in the 306 revisions is a time for us to really capture this, get the buy-in, because I'm looking also forward to ahead. It's great to have those solid set of rules, but implementation's the key, right? And if we can get that buy-in, then we can get that implementation, which is the next important step, once the rules are in place. So I thank you for your time. I'm available at any point, reach out.
Thank you. So Rob is up, and Chris Prost is on deck.
Mr. Klein, I have to scratch a few things based on your comment, so thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Rob Nato. In 1987, I began my teaching career as an uncertified teacher at the Landmark School in Beverly, Mass. In 95, I received an M E D and went on to teach social studies here in New Hampshire for 24 years. During COVID, I taught at V-Lax for about as long enough to have a cup of coffee. I've served on the Hopkinton School Board for the past five years. My comments today are my own. I came to last week's hearing to listen and learn. Upon leaving, I couldn't help but think how any Board of Education couldn't agree in whole or in part with the litany of concerns that were outlined by each speaker. Each of those environments that require rules, private, charter, and public, are governed by different sets of rules that allow them to operate efficiently and in the best interest of their student populations. My reason for being here specifically is I don't see a clear articulation of the problems that the proposed changes seek to resolve, but rather vague references to flexibility and vision. So unfortunately, these changes may not be seen as solutions to a problem, but rather the pursuit of an agenda. Some areas of concern can be resolved by modification of current practice, certification, for example. I think we can agree that certification and credentials are essential and valuable standard in any industry, whether you're a recruiter in private industry or seeking to fill your medical advisory board. The expectation of certification and license is no less true in public education. Current rules allow for individuals of promise to be hired and pursue certification through ALT four. Flexibility to broaden recruitment capacity is the goal, it can be done through broadening the parameters of ALT four, not by diminishing the expectation of credentials. Other flexibility measures could be pursued through the Innovations Plan that are outlined in RSA 194E, which I didn't really know existed until I did a little background research after last week. Last week, when Mr. Vermont noted the broad range of individuals and groups that have been a part of the revision process thus far, and then many of those same individuals and groups spoke wholeheartedly against the current revisions, the true problem was now clear to me, and the solution even clearer. As a person who's been a party to numerous contract negotiations, now from both sides of the table, I see Ed 306 as a contract. And the most successful negotiations are those in which both parties identify and agree to the problems that need resolution, and then work together to craft a contract that meets those goals. It is not a zero-sum game. Both parties should leave the table believing they have been heard, and the outcome leaves everyone better off. And in this case, that means public school students of New Hampshire, two of which from Hopkinton were here this morning, I understand. In closing, I am asking you to tap the brakes on revisions, ensure that specific problems that need action are clarified, clearly identified, and work together with all interested parties to craft Ed 306 rules that everyone in New Hampshire can be proud of. That should be the legacy that you leave as a Board of Education. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Awesome timing. Wow, oh my gosh.
Thirty-seven years in the park.
All right, Chris is up, and David Trumbull is on deck.
All right. Hello, my name's Chris Prost. I'm a father, veteran, and small business owner from Croydon, here to express my opposition to the proposed changes of the Ed 306 rules. I think for a lot of people, the impact of these changes is very undefined, but our town got a glimpse into what they may mean for smaller communities. March 2022, our school district budget was cut by over 50% by the, by the 30-some people who attended the district meeting. Ian Underwood, a close associate of Commissioner Edelblue, pitched the budget cut to attendees and argued it would be easy to do more with less. There was no comprehensive plan to meet the education requirements on such a budget. As we found out over the course of several weeks and many school board meetings, it was going to be very difficult. The reality our town was facing was having the staff of Croydon Village School, known as Little Red, the oldest continuously operating schoolhouse in the country, replaced with pre-end-up Pod Learning for students in kindergarten through fourth grade. Some online learning overseen by unlicensed guides under the direction of a licensed teacher who was maybe not going to be on site. The option was recommended to our school board by the Department of Education, even though it had never been used as the default district education model in any town before. Older students were faced with families having to pay $7,000 to $9,000 out of pocket to remain enrolled in current public schools or face a similar Pod Learning experience through a company called KaiPod. A contract with KaiPod got pushed through the executive council shortly after the budget cut occurred in our town. And our town had no physical location to house the KaiPod group at the time, nor the broadband capability to support such online programs. It's hard not to see parallels to those plans in the proposed revisions. Many in town are upset by these being the public options for our students. Many were also unsure about the legality of such options as public school in our town, wondered if we would be opening up our district to lawsuits. Well, the legal team at the Department of Ed advised there would be no legal issues, and independent counsel raised many questions citing sections of the Ed 306 requirements and RSA 193 that may have been violated should the proposed plan have gone forward. Through grassroots effort, our town banded together to restore the original budget, but it was a warning of what could happen. My concern is that these changes to the standards will remove safeguards to maintain any semblance of equality between districts. Anti-public education groups are already excited and poised to propose cuts to any elements they can, should these revisions get adopted. I oppose the proposed revisions as I fear they will allow schools to be closed or replaced with online learning at remote sites, and students to suffer, especially in small communities like my home. Thanks.
Thank you.
So David Trumbull's up, and then Jen Gillis, is this Jen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Commissioner, and committee members. Last week, I spoke to you about a kind of a constitutional argument, that this was a big policy change that can only be done by the legislature. Today, I want to talk about the merits of these changes, and I take Mr. Klein's comments to heart. I'll offer you a solution. I think that we can make regulations that promote alternative education and bring competency-based assessment up to date. At the same time, we can have regulations that have strong minimum standards based on guaranteeing inputs, that is, buildings, classrooms, taught by teachers, instruction in all subjects to a certain amount of time and hours per year with a substantial educational program, and we can keep our anti-discrimination laws strong. We can marry a strong input system of education with this outputs competency-based assessment program. There's no reason why they are mutually exclusive. We don't have to dismantle the minimum standards, we don't have to dismantle or defund the public schools in order to have competency-based assessment or to have more alternative education. These new regulations do away with that guarantee of a minimum input system. They replace it with opportunities to facilitate learning, which could be done by anybody with no amount of time required, no classroom required, and no shells as far as the instructions go. The only real requirement is that students have to show some kind of proficiency, or not even, yes, proficiency, at the competencies. The problem is that this model has never been tested. Now, competency-based assessment is fine, but it's never been tested in a world in which we got rid of the inputs guarantee that you have a strong system of inputs, a real classroom with teachers, in the first place. It's certainly never been tried in school districts which lack adequate funding. That's the issue in New Hampshire. If you pass these regulations, the state's duty to fund education will drop, so the schools will get less money per pupil. Also, the school board won't be able to go to the people of their town and say, here's the minimum budget we need to meet the regulations. If the regulations are watered down, the local budget will drop. That's going to mean that all of the schoolchildren who are in schools that are just functioning right now are going to end up in schools that are in chaos, in crisis, because their amount of money that they have available to fund those schools will be dropping so much, it will be a disaster for those schools, for those communities, and for those young people who are counting on us to give them a full future. I ask you to take these regulations, put them back on the table, listen to the experts who have come in, and put together a good set of regulations that has alternative ed, that has competency-based assessment, but also a strong guarantee of inputs. That's essential. The only way to make it work is to marry the inputs and the outputs. I believe, working with your experts, you can do that. Thank you.
Okay, so Jen Gillis is up, and Andrea Campbell is on deck. I mean, can you go, Jack? There should be another sign-in sheet over there, maybe.
My name is Jen Camille Gillis, and I am the superintendent of the Manchester School, School District. I'm speaking this afternoon as a leader of the largest and most diverse district in the state of New Hampshire. In my work, I have had many opportunities to review the, review the proposed 306 rule revisions. In addition, I sit on the Education Legislation Committee in Manchester and the New Hampshire School Administrator Association's Equity Committee. In all of these roles, I have approached the 306 draft with a keen eye on the impacts the changes could present for our district, and most importantly, our students. Since I took on my role, I have sought to work with our board and district team to provide paths to close learning gaps for our students exacerbated by the pandemic, lift opportunities for higher-level learning, improve graduation rates, drive opportunities for college and career pathways, and push for systems to support a high-functioning public school district in our city. I believe a solid, high-performing public school system equates to a high-performing city. In our work, we focus on three key drivers: educational programming, staffing, and facilities. We know each of these drivers must be tended to and continuously improved to have balance, and in turn, positive opportunities and outcomes for our public education system. The 306 revisions challenge our work in some key areas: class sizes, teacher certification, and instructional standards. In the current form, the draft will negatively impact our work and progress we are making. I want to focus on one aspect of our work, and that is collaboration. As the largest district in the state, we have worked to have our voice be part of the 306 drafts and revisions. I have, I had asked to be, to have representation from our district in this process. To date, we have participated in listening sessions and have submitted feedback via letters to the State Board. What we have missed is the opportunity to be included at the table for discussions as to how the 306 revision could impact our district. I would offer that we have a unique role in the state as a means to provide feedback and input into the rules that could impact public education from a perspective of a diverse public education system. This week, the 306 draft was reviewed at our Board of School Committee. I am aware that the board has since reached out to Chairman Klein and Commissioner Edelblue to meet with us. I welcome the opportunity to engage in this dialogue and share a deeper understanding from our perspective, the concerns, and our feedback from Manchester. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea Campbell, and Mary Wilkie is on deck.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrea Campbell. I'm here representing myself as a member of the Bedford School Board, a concerned parent of two students in Bedford, and a dedicated public school teacher, formerly also in Bedford, now working in higher education with aspiring educators looking to enter the field. I'm deeply troubled by the proposed changes to the minimum standards as put forth. These changes threaten to weaken our public education system and undermine local control. Of note and concern is the change throughout the document from what was stated as the local school board to just school board. Is this question, is this language a shift? Is this language shift a way to take the local control from the local school boards and shift it to the state board? While this is not clear, it is concerning. I know there's many other changes that are alarming, but I'm only going to speak to two of them today. Number one being the removal of class size maximums. So eliminating class size maximums disregards the importance of manageable class sizes for effective teaching and learning, which will only exacerbate, in my opinion, the teacher shortage crisis in New Hampshire. I know firsthand how a larger class size can affect classroom behavior, relationship building with students, test scores, and both student and teacher mental health. We all know there's a teacher shortage crisis in New Hampshire right now, and I believe the removal of these maximums will exacerbate this. Who would go into teaching knowing that the size of your class is not based on best practices or research for what is best for children, but is instead determined by who is elected to the school board in your district? The second piece that I wanted to just talk briefly about is the weakening of teacher certification requirements. So as a certified teacher myself, and someone who works with students aspiring to become certified teachers, I know how rigorous the process is as set forth by this board and the Department of Education to become a licensed teacher. Changes to the language and definitions threaten to undermine the profession, the professional standards, and may further deter qualified educators from entering or remaining in the profession. These changes not only jeopardize the quality of education for our children, but I believe will also exacerbate the teacher shortage crisis in New Hampshire. Over the last few board meetings, I have watched superintendents, administrators, teachers, school board members, and parents get up over and over to state the same thing: let our voices be heard in these revisions. I recently read in an article that Commissioner Edelblue stated that this rule proposal had provided you all with more input than any other rule proposal in state history, and that he was happy for the feedback, which is nice to hear. I do hope that the volume of feedback speaks volumes to this board, that the experts in this field have concerns and think we can do better for our children, and that you can, in fact, listen and apply this feedback. As a school board member, I'll stop there, but thank you very much, I appreciate you being with us.
Thank you. And very welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. I'm Mary Wilkie, I live in Concord. I taught middle school science for many years, so I thought I might zoom in on one specific rule, but some of my comments would be applicable to others. I'm looking at Section 41(c), and I'm concerned about the revisions and hope you do not adopt them. Middle schools are currently required to have a science program that includes lab experiences, fieldwork, observations, investigations, and other inquiry-based activities. These kinds of experiences go to the very heart of what science is. They're highly engaging for students, and they foster deep understanding, yet the proposed rules would make them optional. I'd like to share a quick description of an inquiry-based lesson from a unit on flower parts and their functions, and this is a particularly simple one because other ones are too complicated to get across in three minutes. Eleven-year-olds love hands-on learning, and when I distributed to each child a rhododendron blossom and a magnifying lens, you would think they had just won the lottery. Right away, they started buzzing with observations and questions. Someone points out that one of the five petals on the blossom has spots and the others don't. Hey, mine too, others say, and they wonder why. A student notes that the stamen and pistil, which are the structures that come up in the middle of the flower, that they all have a bend at the top, and everyone checks theirs and says, yeah, mine too. Wait a minute, says somebody, do yours all bend toward that spotted petal? And everyone looks and says, yes, why? Does that have something to do with pollination? A student peels open the base of the stamen, I mean, excuse me, of the pistil, and calls out that it's full of little dots, and they look like seeds. Everyone peels theirs back and says the same, and somebody says, how would pollen get from the top to the bottom? Another question to add to our list, our growing list, and on and on, the lesson went on. Over the following days, students eagerly researched the questions they had generated. Sure, you could show a student the video, and as a result, the student might be able to tell you the names and functions of flower parts, but which activity would lead to a deeper understanding? Which students would experience the wonder of discovery that underlies the whole field of science? Inquiry-based activities need equipment and materials, which can be expensive, and they need teachers to plan and provide the systematic instruction that the current rules insist on, but the proposed rules drop. If the mandates become options, inevitably, some financially strapped districts will choose to avoid the expense of hands-on, in-person science lessons and opt for something cheaper. What a loss that would be for the students. And we all know which students these would be. Not those at schools in well-heeled districts, but those in districts that find themselves, as a resident of Pembroke recently put it, choosing between pricing out the elderly or supporting their schools. Please retain the current Rule 41(c) so all students in all zip codes will have access to high-quality, systematic, inquiry-based instruction in science. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't, so. That is all we had. I doubt. I'm just going to just make sure.
See, we might get to do the rest of your hearing.
What's that?
Might get to do the rest of your hearing.
Might get to.
Can I just add one thing?
Sure.
Appreciate all the feedback. I, like, the more specific the feedback, the easier it is for us as we're looking at the rulemaking process. Like, general feedback is like, can be taken in, but the specificity of the feedback is incredibly helpful when it's like, the science.
Like, Mary pointing out the exact.
And it just.
Lines, so we can look it up. That was great. Thank you for that.
Otherwise, we're left to interpret the general overall feedback, so like, any emails are very welcome with specific feedback to the rules.
Okay.
At least by me.
Yeah. I'm with you. The more, the more specific, the better when it comes to examples, that's very helpful. So I think we're checking to see if we've got any other people signing up. So I think we're checking to see if we've got any other people signing up. While we're waiting for that, I think it might be worth just mentioning, because it seems to be a lot of the same points people are making, and some of them involve things that we have already addressed. and some of them involve things that we have already addressed. Like class sizes, for example. So in the process of having a conversation about the class size rules, that's a conversation. We were going through the rules, just for an example, just so people kind of know where we are, and seeing all these numbers, right? Twenty people in a class, twenty kids, twenty-five kids in a class, right? And you've got a classroom defined and a number of kids. And so we start to ask questions, why that specific number? Nobody could tell us. If you're going to have a number written as a mandate, it'd be nice to know why that specific number and not a different number, right? So we suggest, as another way to look at it, we require, as a requirement, an appropriate teacher-student ratio instead of a specific number for a classroom. It's a different way to get at the same goals. So that's the ongoing conversation we're having. The conversation is not, hey, let's just take numbers out and let districts do free-for-all. That was never the conversation. The conversation was, maybe we phrase it differently, maybe we come up with a ratio, maybe we insert language that says research-based or science-based or, we have, that's the conversation we're having. Right? So that was told to a lot of groups that are supposed to be reporting back to people, but apparently that message didn't get back. So this is the ongoing conversation that we're having about how to write rules that make sense, but maybe are a little flexible for school districts. Maybe that doesn't work and we have to go back and put numbers in, right? But that's, that's kind of where we are. We're trying to think of how do we have standards that fit for every district, but maybe aren't quite as rigid as the old way of doing things, right? So that's one example. Unfortunately, that has not gotten communicated backwards. It's like we thought it was going to. So people apparently think we're just going to have no standards for teacher-student ratios, which is not the case. So, and those are written in there. So there's a lot of misinformation that's getting out about what's actually in these rules and what our goals and intentions are.
Can I just share another example? Because I was, I heard a lot of testimony, you know, last time and this time as well, like that we're removing teacher certification. And I was trying to figure out what the source of that was. But I don't know if individuals understand, in law, several years ago, the term certification got changed to licensure. So the only change in this rule is to change certification to licensure so that it marries up to what is in the law. So if somebody has some place where they think that we've somehow eliminated the certification and they let us know where they think that is, we're happy to take a look at it, but otherwise, it's not clear what that criticism is, so.
And local school board also is a.
That's a fine one, right?
That's in a definition, so that's in there. We're not doing away with local schools.
I heard a couple of times of people coming up on the three oh sixes that they're submitting their information to Angelo or emailing them and they were feeling that they weren't being heard. So just to let them know, what do you do, what do you, or Frank, when you receive all their written submissions?
It all, it all gets sent to the board members.
Yeah, so here's the way it's going to work. Okay, so we're in the public comment period and so we are accumulating all of that. When the public comment period ends, we'll be consolidating it. Julie has a requirement to provide a summary of that. We're going to put it, like, all of this, all the written feedback we get and we'll summarize the oral feedback. And then I believe we had talked about, you know, scheduling kind of a working session. I think Phil, this was your idea, to kind of go through, like, okay, here's all the feedback that we've gotten on these rules and here's what we can do with it. So it's going through the process.
I think they needed to hear that.
Yeah.
What your process was, but.
It's not even my process. This is the rulemaking process, right?
Right, but I mean, I think they needed to hear that. It sounded like, you know, they thought.
Yeah, there's no black hole anywhere.
Comments were just being filed and that was it.
Yeah.
Good.
Just really quickly, so we didn't have anybody else who signed up. My agenda just has one PM on here. It doesn't have a end time. Is there a notice, end time for this public hearing?
There is not.
There is not.
You can just close it when you're done. All right.
How do people ask questions? Are they sending pink cards?
Yeah, we don't, we don't do it that. It's not the, we're a rulemaking body. We don't do it the way the legislature does. But again, we have ample opportunity for you to submit questions and we can take those and respond, but we don't do public comment as a dialogue here. It's more of a, for us to get information on stuff. I understand the value though, being able to ask questions.
Where's the test result until April thirtieth?
There you go.
Here, Colin, can I, I just want to make a statement to something you just said about, you know, the minimum, the maximum class sizes. Where did those numbers come from?
Yeah.
I think one of the requests I would make, and this was similar to the forty-three courses that were listed under the Program of Studies.
Yeah.
Because I can actually give you some historical perspective where those maximum class sizes came from.
Yeah.
Because I worked in Nashville in the nineties when the state did not have class sizes.
Right.
I particularly had a class size of forty-two students.
Wow.
Because there was no class size in my local CBA and I can speak to you about some of the conversations that happened at the department. Just like when I heard that nobody knew the reasoning behind the forty-three courses to define the Program of Studies. When Mark completely texted me, I said, Mark, I can tell you where that whole number came from, breakdown by breakdown. So what I would respectfully ask is that when you get to those points in the rules,
Yeah.
where you're like, where are these things coming from? Pause for a second, take a check. Ask, ask, do I have the right people around the table that might be able to provide some background on?
Well, we did, you know, so we were asking for that kind of info and we made a point of sort of bookmarking those as points for ongoing conversation, right?
And hoping that we get feedback.
And hoping that we do get this feedback. So for example, I know forty-three is a great example, you know. Districts are required to offer forty-three different courses and so we started a conversation with why forty-three and not thirty-eight? Like, why, we don't, nobody could tell us where forty-three came from. So that was a bookmark to have a conversation about how did that number, what should that number be? How should it look? What should we be mandating there? So same thing with the class sizes. It's a bookmark to say, okay, how should this actually best work in practice? How should the language look? Should we, you know, and part of the discussion was, if we use the word class, does that lock districts into a concept of something they might want to change later? So should it be not focused on a building in a room, but focused on a teacher-student ratio? So that's the conversation that we're talking about. But we just want to have that conversation and get those answers because it may end up looking like it does now. It may end up looking like class, number, that kind of thing, but it's certainly worth having a conversation. I mean, that's kind of our job here is to question, okay, why is that there? Is there a way to do it better? You know, and that's, that's part of this whole ongoing process, so.
And I think definitions are key too.
Absolutely.
Establishing common definitions.
Yeah, and then, and that's a bit, that was maybe, maybe the biggest part of all the conversation we had is over those definitions, right? So, you know, it's hugely important.
I do think like a working session, like the commissioner referred to, like in public, that would, like, I think would be so helpful.
Yeah, you just get the rest of it with all this input.
I think there's a lot of like similar desire with crossways that like is just, or getting mixed up in the political melo and I think there's a lot more alignment than there is misalignment. We just have to like transparently show that.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm wrong, but that's my read.
I think there is more.
Do you have a comment, Mark?
Yeah, and sorry that I didn't submit a card or sign up, but it seems like we're a little bit of a back and forth. So there has been some feedback relative to class sizes and the forty-three.
Yeah.
Not necessarily a historical analysis of where those numbers came from, but some perspective and feedback on how those are used to establish a minimum standard for schools and the fact that what they do in application and why they're important. So that has been submitted to the State Board and I think that's something that will be considered. I think it will.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's what we wanted, was that kind of answers to questions. And so, all right. Well, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. We didn't have anybody else signed up. So thanks, everybody, for the feedback.
And I need to make an amendment to my motion for seventy-two district field.
Okay, so propose an amendment to the motion.
Yes, the amendment I would like to propose is I move that the State Board reject the hearing option's report and recommendation and for a finding that RSA nineteen-four dash D requires a resident district to pay the tuition of their pupils attending an open enrollment school outside the resident district, regardless of whether the sending district has adopted the provisions of RSA one ninety-four D.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Very precise.
Very precise.
Ripped by water.
All right, thanks for that amendment. All right, so let's get back to Great Bay Charter.
I am waiting off to play some PlayStation.
Okay, our charter school office, Great Bay Academy Charter Public School for a charter amendment. Peter Stackhouse, Executive Director.
Eric Felborge.
Eric Felborge.
Board trustees.
Board trustees.
Welcome. Sorry it took a while to get you on, but pretty shake your pitch.
It's, it's almost like we have these experiences where we try to get out into traffic and just the timing is awful. We're just looking for that. It's good to be back with you again. My name is Peter Stackhouse. We, we were together at the emergency meeting a couple of short months ago and you folks graciously granted approval for us to take on fifth graders, which we did and that has gone extremely well. At the time, we were asked, you know, what is your plan regarding K to four? Do you have any thoughts on that or considerations on that? We, at the time, we just felt like we needed a little bit more time to consider all of the, the different ramifications and logistics around that. So what we've done is we've submitted an application asking for the expansion of our school program to include grades K to four and in addition to our five to twelve program. And also allowing us to increase our enrollment from our current level of one seventy to two hundred and eighty-seven, which will accommodate the additional grades. In addition to that, we felt like it was important for us to update our charter document because the original charter document that was approved in two thousand and four for Great Bay E-Learning Charter School at the time, we are, we're a different entity than, than we were at that time. We are a different, philosophically, we're very much the same school with the same similar mission, but we're not overseen by the Exeter Regional Public School District anymore. We're completely independent, serving students from, you know, thirty different communities. So we wanted to make sure that we had our charter document up to date to reflect the different evolution aspects of our program.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
I, I know you spoke to this before, you spoke to this in the submission, but how many students do you have now?
One hundred and sixty-five today.
And the addition of the fifth grade brought you in.
So it was actually, we, we opened the year at approximately one hundred and forty and the circumstance that led to us coming forward to ask for fifth grade, at that time, we added, we added four fifth graders from that school, but we also added eighteen other students from that school. So we have since added two additional fifth graders from other schools.
Kind of bouncing around a little bit. I apologize, but with the addition of K through four, are you going to stagger that or just do it all at once?
So our, our plan is to do it over at least two years to, we, we're, our program has, has been kind of unique because we originally started as a grade eight to ten program. So I, we've actually been here several times before to ask about expanding our program. Hopefully, this is the last time. But we've, we worked from eight to ten and then we got grades eleven and twelve. So we were allowed, our, our students, our first graduating class in two thousand and eight was allowed to graduate. And then we've been adding grades in a backwards fashion. So our plan right now is to add grades three and four next year and then move forward with the other grades as our logistical issues allow.
You might, you might find like a lot of other charter schools, like kindergarten is a wonder, I mean, it's in demand.
Yeah.
And it's a wonderful feeder, if you will, to kids grow with you and stay with you.
Right, right.
It's just a great way to do that. So you're doing the right thing.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, we just want to be real cautious and conservative about how we do this. You know, we want to do a good job for our school and for our students. We just, we have to build the organizational capacity to, to take on the little ones. And, you know, our, the fifth graders have been integrated enthusiastically and they're, they're a wonderful group to work with. But fifth and sixth grade, you know, it's, it's kind of similar.
Last question, well, maybe not last, but now, you have the space for all of us.
So we, we have been leasing, we're actually leasing two wings of the former Exeter High School building down in Exeter. There is a, there is a vacant wing in the front of that building. We've, we've approached the district about potentially expanding into that. It'll create a continuous connection to our, to our current program. We do have, as it stands now, we would have the space to accommodate what we're, what we're doing. But that, you know, we have to work the logistics out with them, but we'll get some time to do that.
So I'm really excited about this, like being, I'm District Three myself, so I, like, that, I was looking, are you located, co-located with SST?
We are attached to SST.
Attached to SST, like, is there any, any concern with having littles, that little, and like SST like co-located? Because it'd be a lot of, like, I know, like, New Markets has a ton of people at SST. We're not the only ones, right?
Yeah.
There's a ton, ton of older kids, like way outnumbered from, you know what I mean?
That's a great question.
Yeah.
Victor? That's a great question. My name is Eric Felborge and I'm Board of Trustees. I actually worked for Peter, for Pete years and then went off and did other things and then back on the Board of Trustees. It's a great question. Thankfully, the entrance to SST is on the other side of the building, tightly controlled and the odds of SST students even seeing our little kids visually is almost impossible the way the whole setup is there. So it's a great question. That would be, that's one of our concerns as well. But I think our physical setup is going to, is going to conducive to all the, answering all the concerns around those issues. Makes sense?
Yeah, it, it does make sense.
We're early in the process too, but we envision that we might have opportunities to partner with SST in terms of like the extension of their early childhood program. They have a preschool program, pre-teaching program. You know, if we can, if we can build that partnership to, you know, involve working with our students, you know, that would be fantastic.
Yeah. Is that, I guess my other question would be around, again, it's just like having, my littles are little right now, right? Like, it's just different, right? Like the, like play space, right? Like play space for them is different from like recess space or like for like high school kids, right? Any, any plans in that space yet?
There's, there's a lot of open space on the, on the campus that we have access to. Currently, it's, it's in the form of athletic fields. I mean, they're, it's, it's enclosed in a fenced area. The YMCA uses some of that space at the after-school program. So there's plenty of space. We don't have, right now, there are no plans or, or discussions about structures or, you know, small things like that. But we do have plenty of, of space, a lot of campus opportunities.
The board is looking forward to kind of investigating what that should look like for the kind of school that we run and, and what should come, you know, what should the earlier graders look like to prepare kids to continue on? So we're really energized about investigating what that might look like. We don't have the answers yet. It's a cart and a horse thing. We would want to be premature and set all that up before having the provision field to put those in.
I, I very much appreciate your sort of backwards entering people, right? Like starting at like the higher, closer to where you are grades entering back because it is like, just, I mean, your educators are aware, right, the developmental abilities. It's just a different stage of development.
Right.
Great job of, of your budget, working with your budget. I like that. Slow growing, no?
I'd love to come and take a look.
Good.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a challenge. Charter schools, it's always, because we, our, our revenues are certainly driven by our enrollments and we've, to this point, we've not been a school that's been at capacity in all of our upper grades. So, you know, we're just, we're methodical about the way we do it.
Yeah.
The way, you know, thoughtful about how we use our resources and.
Can I ask a moral question? I'm sorry, extending this meeting. The, so I know that it's, your numbers here are based by grades, right? Like, but you're project-based learning, you're like, like, is there flexibility for aptitude of like, hey, if someone is operating like in one domain at a different level, like, are they like, whoa, you're in this grade, you've got to be here, or do they have the opportunity to expand?
Yeah, I mean, we, we do have mixed grade groupings. We have, we have. We have, we have middle school students that are working with some of our high school students in, in different subject areas, math, for example. You know, it's, it's, we just have to have that flexibility in order to be able to make it work. So, you know, we're, we're definitely open to it. It's not anything that, we, we try to make it happen. We're, you know, we're trying to find solutions rather than barriers.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's, to be flexible, it's really important. Our parents have appreciated that.
Thank you.
I just want to say, Peter, I appreciate and it's evident in every time you come before us, how methodical and careful you are. It really is. It really, it really comes through. You guys don't come to us with any willy-nilly stuff. You're always prepared. You always have, everything is very, very methodical and very planned and very well organized and it shows. So.
Appreciate that.
Just want to commend you for that.
I move that the State Department of Education approve the amendment of the Great Bay Charter Public Schools Charter.
Second it.
Okay.
Aye.
Congratulations, guys.
All good work.
Good job.
We're going to text them. They'll be real happy guys.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's going to be some happy families that are going to be home.
I'm just curious, Peter, how many families will this impact that has littles?
Probably fifteen to twenty.
I was going to guess fifteen.
Yeah, yeah. Plus others that have called that we haven't even met, yeah.
Yeah.
Good luck. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Wonderful. Okay, Big Brothers Big Sisters, Learn Everywhere someday.
That's what Travis will know.
Yeah.
We're already going to Exeter. Tim, are you up?
Good afternoon. Tim Carney, Administrator of Educational Pathways. So today we're looking for a renewal, five-year renewal for the Big Brothers Big Sisters of New Hampshire, Learn Everywhere program. Can I have Casey here from Big Brothers Big Sisters? And if you want to introduce yourself and?
I'm Casey Lefler. I'm the Program Coordinator for Mentor 2.0. I currently am embedded at West High School in Manchester. After we launched the program last year, and we're in our second year right now, so we have about fifteen students. And we're looking forward to next year where we have another thirty students currently interested in the program, so.
I'm glad you're back for renewal.
Thank you.
I thought your program was really interesting and would prepare kids well for a future.
Thank you.
It's a great program. We have it in Littleton. Fantastic.
Any questions or discussion? And motion?
I move the State Department of Education to approve the Big Brothers Big Sisters of New Hampshire Learn Everywhere renewal application with a giant thank you very much.
Eighteen seconds.
Exactly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Go make some good citizens out there.
We'll try. We're going to sign these for you before you roll.
Yeah, yeah, here we go. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Tim, you have another item up here.
Yes. So the next item is a request to the board to recognize NEASC as an approved agency for accrediting non-public schools for a period of ten years.
And representative NEASC is here.
Hi. My name is George Edwards. I'm the Chief Accreditation Officer at the New England Association of Schools and Colleges and the resident of New London, New Hampshire. So it's nice to be here today.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for surviving the eclipse and making it back down.
And the snowstorm.
And the sea.
In the last couple of weeks.
Any questions or discussion?
I move that the State Department of Education accept the recommendation of the NSAC and identify NEASC as a recognized program or political agency for non-public schools for the period of April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four through April eleventh, two thousand and thirty-four. Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations.
Great, thank you very much.
Julie, I think you're up. All right.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
You can explain it, but you might get.
Sure. So we have here a preliminary objection response. You guys have seen these forms a couple of times. Unfortunately, legislatively, we don't have the option to do a conditional approval for this process. And so it's a preliminary objection response. I included the communication to Joe Carr. There's several minor changes. One of the forms ma, is now matching the rule text. And we have the, yep, the, well, that's, I'll say that in a second. Oh, they want, there were some, they're, they talked about needing notarized documents, which was an outdated thing that wasn't being done anyway. And it needed to be explained in rule, but we just took it out because we don't actually do it. And so that was removed. And then there were some citations were fixed to point to the correct text from the forms to the rule. There is an amendment that is not on those forms that I wanted to bring up. Two of the forms, DOE BOC five and DOE BOC seven have the wrong address on them. They have the one-on-one Pleasant Street address and they need to have the twenty-five Hall Street address. So I'm hoping we can, you guys can vote on that amendment for those two forms, unless there's anything else that you have concerns or questions about with these.
Nope. I have a motion to approve the preliminary objection response to ED five oh five dot zero eight, Bureau of Credentially Forms. Second it.
Does that include the, we need the amendments?
With, with.
With the amended addresses?
With amend, with, the two specified forms, address amendments.
Right.
Okay. Second?
Second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I, Anne, can I just inform the board of one item? I've, I've gotten feedback from the field and just heard it again now during the three oh six public comment period, this discussion around removing, you know, licensing for teachers, right? And I know we've changed the wording from certification to licensure. Licenseure nationwide is generally recognized as something that a governmental entity gives out. Don't give out a certification, they give out a license, think driver's license, plumber's license, so forth, right? Whereas private industry uses the term certification. So that's why the move over the last few years around the country has been to change that terminology to licensure. So just a little bit of background there, but that's, licenses are what governments give out. Certifications are what non-governments give out, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I did hear back from OLS regarding the conditional approval response, so that was approved. And so those rules, the ED fourteen hundred Learn Everywhere rules are ready to adopt if you so.
Motion to adopt ED fourteen hundred regarding Learn Everywhere.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, follow that for you.
Okay, so Anne needs to know you guys, because she is going to miss her flight if she doesn't.
Oh, yes, you can't miss your flight. Is that okay if I like kick you out of here? Yes, go, please. She's trying to hang tight. We're done, like there's nothing. Safe journey.
Do you want to even ask if we could bring you home or anything?
Where are you going?
Just the consent agenda.
You going to Paris? Yeah, chocolate, chocolate, please. That's all I can think of. Are we hoping you're going to be there?
Just a week.
Just a week in Paris.
Well, no, we're going to champagne, we're going to Ardenne and champagne and that.
Oh, wow. Chocolate, macaroons, anything like that.
I have a type of français, mais.
Oh, yeah. Oh, God, here we go.
Yeah, but he can't speak Deutsch.
There we go.
He can't speak Deutsch.
My son, my son, my oldest now is, one of his matrix is German, so he can now talk to me and I don't understand what he's saying.
He will often speak French today and I'll say, try again.
Thank you all very much and I'll see you in May.
Okay, we'll see you then.
May days. Or something.
Safe travel.
Maybe in the re.
Bonjourne.
Are we still thinking, I was hoping.
Have a good time.
Yes, we, I think we're out of here. I knew I had you out of here by three, but I knew she had to, so.
You still have a couple more, just the consent agenda.
It's a love festival. Everybody loves everybody.
But Jack, is this the really your official last?
Yeah.
Maybe not just, we don't say that, yes, don't. We'll see.
We don't say that.
Yeah, don't.
The answer is yes, it's my last.
I'm sure there's update. Have you guys found a consent agenda first? The what? Do you need to adopt anything off the consent agenda first? I mean, you're, you're first on the agenda. Okay, so I'll go ahead. I didn't know if Phil, we've got one and Jim needs to roll here. We have a quarrel with three, so. We do. Yeah, but I think we're, yeah, we're. Okay, that's fine. So a couple of quick things. So the Bureau of Special Education was awarded the National Center for Accessible Educational Materials. And this is really, do you guys remember Mary?
Lane.
Mary Lane. Yeah, I, I found her only because she retired and now she's back. She came, she left, she came back. But she does a ton of work and we hold like these, you guys have never been to one of them, but we have like these kind of trade shows and we get vendors coming in about all the accessibility things for individuals with disabilities. And it is so cool to watch the families come through and like learn about these things that they just had no idea existed. And they're like, wait, I can do this? And like, yes, you can. And so she was recently awarded, I don't, got an award by the Office of Special Education Programs, so we're excited about that. The VR Berlin office was also recognized as the recipient from the White Mountain Community College President's Community Partner Award. Employees Stephen Alward and Rose Long, Vocation and Leadership Counselors up there, worked very closely with the college to just make sure that people are able to access their post-secondary stuff. So we were excited that they were recognized for that as well.
Good.
Yes, exactly. We had a Kingston educator, I have all these awards, right? Kingston educator has been chosen as the New Hampshire twenty twenty-four state finalist of the prestigious Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. So her name is, this is Brandy Boldock. She's a former math interventionist and teacher at, in kindergarten at the Daniel Baki Elementary School in Kingston. We want to congratulate Brandy on this well-deserved recognition and for making profound difference in her classrooms. It is incredible, the work that she's doing. We had another, you know, bonus Teacher of the Year program. It was, it was over three hundred nominations this time, right? We didn't quite hit our, our applications. We were at seventy-seven applications, which is still kind of just a huge number of applications. Remember you get nominated and then you have to fill out this very rigorous process to get your application done. Last year we were in close to a hundred. This year we got seventy-seven, which is still a very good number. And so we are, you know, working through that Teacher of the Year process and it's been great. I had a chance to meet with the current Teacher of the Year just recently and talk to her about some of her aspirations relative to reading and making sure that little kiddos know how to read and that we don't leave anybody behind. Two other things that I wanted to flag for you, we're going to talk about the audit, because I know that's on the consent agenda a little bit. But it was interesting, they described the program, he, he mentioned that Army came to this school. So it just, that's not the military. That is the Advanced Regenerative Medicine Initiative.
Manufacturing.
Manufacturing Initiative. And, you know, so that is a great program. We actually have that in twenty-six schools now across the state. And I was on a call with them just recently.
Amazing.
It is, because this is hard to get anybody to do anything, right? And they, and we're going to have them up at the superintendent's conference and continue to push that. But great, great opportunity. The way they have structured it is kind of like a, I think it's about a twelve or sixteen-week program. When they go into the schools and they do it, it's a very engaging thing for the kids. Because these guys feel like, these kids feel like they're scientists, right? They feel, they're like, oh my gosh, I am creating the next thing. And, and it's cool to watch, so.
They are. I mean, they're, they're on that first rung.
They really are, exactly.
They're really.
I mean, they're basically. A new spleen, right? Or new blood. Yes, exactly, right?
I think it's great.
It's an incredibly engaging program, yes. And that is actually, you guys have awarded, that is, that program is a Learn Everywhere program as well. So the kids who are going through there are able to get science credits, so. And the next thing we're going to talk, we had, we, a lot of people came in today and we're talking about special education. I think we're going to get some more testimony from a couple of those folks who didn't understand the public comment process. I know Christine is going to talk a little bit about the audit, but, you know, one of the things that you're hearing, and, and they've brought some of that to you, but I don't know if it's really in your wheelhouse to be able to do, in your jurisdiction to necessarily be able to intervene on there. And there's a lot of conversation and stuff over at the legislature and, and we've had a lot of conversation. I mean, what, I think some people don't realize, you, you know, like, and I'm happy to have audits, they can audit us all day long. In fact, that's what they do. We have every single audit going on over here that we possibly have going on. But when they're auditing us, so for example, you're going to see an audit here and there's like three, we, we processed about three hundred of these dispute resolutions, which come, you know, some of them end up, that's some of the stuff that you're doing as well. But that's a very small slice of what's happening in, in special education. I mean, statewide, we spend about nine hundred million dollars a year in special education. The department has about a hundred million of that, truthfully, you know, sixty-eight of which is pass-through. Like we don't even touch it anyways, we just push it out to the school. So of that nine hundred million, you know, maybe thirty or something like that is here. And so when we focus on our efforts here, we really are not getting a lot of the big picture. Because much of these, as you heard from some of these parents, the issues happen and we don't even know about them, right? They have a problem with their kid, they talk to the school. If they gets resolved, that's gets resolved. If it doesn't get resolved, then we don't know about it, then we don't know about it, right? It's just a problem that's happening out there and we're unaware of what's going on. So, I mean, that is really one of the areas that we're trying to figure out. How do we help the schools more effectively kind of address this? And it was interesting, and it, it was one of these cases that came in here and she shared her story. But, and so I may not get all of her facts correctly, but she shared here, but it was one of these complaints that did come to me, right? And, and I don't know how we get, we strike the right balance, because in an IEP process, you know, the parent is a member of the IEP team, but not a weighted member in any way, right? They're just one of, a member on an IEP team. I mean, in that particular case, you, you have a, a parent who, you know, the school, the kid was in, the child was in kindergarten. The school was suggesting it's August, saying like the kid's going to go to first grade. You know, mom, who came in and shared with us, is concerned, like something's off. I'd like to hold the kid back here. Like I don't think they're ready, right? You know, the school says, nope, we don't like holding kids back, we're going forward, right? So mom pulls her kid out of school, not an insignificant thing, says I'm going to try homeschooling, right? Homeschools the kid on her own. In January, she's homeschooling, it's like this, something's off here, right? And pays out of her own pocket to get evaluations done on her kid to discover that there's a problem. Says like, yes, I think there's a problem. You know, struggling with the homeschool and the problems, enrolls her kid back into a public school so the kid has access to special education services, meets with the district around that. And they're like, you know, the initial response is no, everything's okay. You know, keeps persistent. That's in, in May, gets told like, no, everything's okay. In August, okay, maybe they have a, an four, a five oh four plan, right? And mom's like, and is asking for evaluations and they're like, no, they don't need that. You know, in October resurfaces, says like, we have to do these evaluations, something's off, right? They finally do the evaluations and in January, the kid finally gets an IEP. You know, this is eighteen months later. And so what I'm trying to impress about my team as we're, as we're talking to folks is, like we have to find a way to recognize that input from the person who's going to know the kid the best, which is oftentimes the parent. Because I, in that particular case, like there were some glaring signals, right? Like I'm, I'm asking, like, I think my kid should be held back here. Nah, we're going to keep going. You know, not an insignificant, you think, okay, then I'm going to homeschool and then work on it. I'm going to pay out of pocket and do my own evaluations. Like, like this parent is sending us all kinds of signals. Like I need some help here. And, and we just keep moving past those. And so I'm trying to figure out how do we help the system recognize those signals as being substantive and important for the child and not have this delay in process.
Did I hear that properly though, that the IEP only occurred after she filed an appeal with you?
That's correct.
Yeah, so it was.
But we had a lot of, I guess what I'm saying is like, it's easy in hindsight, right? So I'm not trying to recreate the thing, but we had a lot of like breadcrumbs along the path here. And we just got to figure out how to make sure that we're identifying those breadcrumbs.
Yeah, I think your point that what the vast majority of this stuff just occurs between a parent and IEP team or school administrators at the school level, never, whether it's successfully concluded or unsuccessfully.
We just don't know, right?
We don't get, you don't get, almost all of that happens.
Shine on it and a note goes to the principal, then.
Even, even in those cases, I mean, there's so, I.
It's hard to, right?
And part of this because if you're a parent and you're being told by eight people around a table, well, this is really best, we're the experts, we know what your kid needs. It's really hard when you're, when you don't know the jargon or the terminology or. It's really hard when you're, it, when you don't know the jargon or the terminology or the research or any of that, it's hard to push back.
Well, and sometimes they're, to your point, they're imprecise, 'cause they're not experts at it, right? So they're trying to say like, something's off, but I don't know what, right?
You don't know, and we've seen this kind of thing when we have parents articulating to us, who aren't lawyers, trying to make a legal case. Sometimes the parent, and look, a lot of times the team is right, you know, sometimes parents.
Probably more often than not, but.
Yeah, yeah, probably most of the time, the team is right, but you have situations where the parent senses something and knows something and the team isn't getting it and you have this lack of communication or whatever it is and those things often don't get, um, worked out.
Is it to give them more authority in the process or to give them more resources, maybe someone to help them?
I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but, you know, 'cause we're kind, we wanna, you know, we want all those voices at the table, which, how do we not let the, the signals get passed?
I don't know the way, it's just, but, disagree. And I think the, yeah, I think these things are structured in a way to help the kid, like, everybody at that table wants to help the kid. You know, but we, we keep seeing instances where, um, the kid doesn't get the help that they, the specific type of help they need or things are unsatisfied with the parents and, and so, there are some breakdowns. And I think trying to figure out how to make that work better is, is useful. And a lot of times, I mean, I can tell you from a lot of parents I know who've had kids in these similar situations. Sometimes you'll see, even at the highest performing school districts in the state, you know, parents withdrawing their kids o- over IEP issues.
Well, if it's not working, so they're, because they are trying to find something that's gonna work, right? That's a, that's a, there's like, that's one of those signals. If the parent says, fine, I'm gonna try something else, it's like, they're saying like, I don't think you can solve my problem. 'Cause everybody wants to have the problem solved, but they've concluded that that's not where they're gonna get it solved.
Yeah, yeah.
Here's where like socioeconomic inequality comes into place, because some people have the resources.
Right.
To withdraw and send, be like, we're gonna find something else, and then someone who doesn't have the resources.
Yeah, yeah, and some don't. Exactly.
They, like, ones who are most susceptible to fall into societal cracks, they start falling to the cracks.
Yeah, and I think probably most of the time, the accommodations that the IEP team is making work and they, they know what they're doing, they really are trained and educated in this stuff. Sometimes they don't work and that's where we have, um, and I'm not saying this is the case every time, but we do seem to, we see some cases where the toolkit isn't the right toolkit for that kid, you know? I don't, what we're offering as accommodations or as a fix isn't really what that kid needs. And I think that's part of where we see that breakdown and that difficulty coming to an agreement. And, and that's when you see the parent say, you know what, I'm out. And I, you know, I don't wanna see that, I don't wanna see the parent say, I'm out. I wanna, I wanna see them be able to solve that in the school and keep the kid there and, and come to a good solution.
So one more pivot I need, one that I'll share with you, so on, I think it was Tuesday night, was I down in Massachusetts?
Yes.
Yeah, so Tuesday night I had an opportunity to speak on a panel on an issue that I think is, uh, important. Um, and it's, it was called College in Three. But basically, there is a, a fairly substantive conversation taking place across the country around trying to find opportunities for students to be able to get out of college in three years, not in necessarily standards. You know, and saying like, okay, well, can we, you know, uh, not have those students have to complete these, you know, prerequisite requirements and, uh, you know, and be able to, you know, kind of get done with their degree more quickly. To your point, Phil, it's a bit, uh, and this is part of the conversation, it's a bit of a, you know, an equity issue as well, because, you know, like, if, when you have to get a hundred and twenty credit hours for a degree, you know, the meter is running for every one of those hundred and twenty credit hours, right? And it's an all or nothing proposition, right? If you get them done, you get your degree. If you don't get them done, you're just left with the cost and you didn't get them done, right? So is there an opportunity to create, you know, that other, uh, degree type of pathways that allow these students to get through? And it was a bit of a robust conversation, there were three of the national accrediting agencies were there, Massachusetts, uh, higher education folks were there and some other folks. But I just, I expect more of this conversation to take place around, um, you know, flexibility at that post-secondary world as well.
That's.
Uh, some of those people were pretty calcified, just to let you know.
Higher education, yeah.
Yes.
It's so overdue.
Yeah.
It's just.
So it was encouraging to be there, though, to have that conversation.
I mean, we've had, so just for example, we've had conversations, I've had, how many times we have these conversations with the UNH, who has all these, uh, problems with enrollment? They have, you know, we have critical shortage areas we wanna do. And, you know, I've had conversations with administrators there about, okay, so how can we devise this program? How can you guys come back to us with a program that is more streamlined, that is focused only on what these people need to do? To, uh, to, to start that job as a graduate with a credential and X. You know, at twenty-two years old or twenty-one years old, um, you've got all this stuff that you're piling on, making them get a four-year degree and, and, and take all these extracurriculars and do all this stuff. Is there a way you can do it more? We've had these conversations with them and I think they're open, they're realizing their pro, and this is the case for majors and all kinds of different majors and colleges at the four-year level. Is that pipeline of students, that fire hose of students that they were getting in the eighties and nineties, is now a trickling garden hose? And the demand to spend four years in school and spend a hundred thousand dollars, uh, on a degree, where your degree is a lot lower than what it used to be? And, I mean, you're seeing enrollment in, in these colleges.
Well, I mean, I, you were calling enrollment, so these are, are ed prep program enrollments, like, I had them for another thing, but like, you know, at Keene in twenty thirteen, fourteen, we had two hundred and fourteen students enrolled. Last year we had seventy-five. You know, UNH, or Plymouth, we had three hundred and ten, we're at a hundred and forty. UNH two forty-one, we're at eighty-four.
Right.
Wow.
And that, and that's, to, to, to your point, that's a signal, right?
Yeah.
And so the, the students are saying, we don't see the value in going here to get a four-year degree in this subject.
Because we're certifying more people than we ever have, right?
So, so they're, and they gotta respond to that signal by offering something different that'll attract those students. And so having that discussion of what that looks like in the future is just so important.
Those are completers, by the way, not enrollards. Thank you, Steven just texted me, he must be listening.
Still, I mean, that's a tremendous drop-off.
I, I mean, and you see it in small private schools.
Yeah.
Shuttering, they're closing, colleges are literally closing their doors, they cannot maintain, they're not financially viable.
Yeah.
Can't vote themselves.
How many, how many colleges in New England alone in the last fifteen years or so have closed?
Well, look at Vermont, they've validated, what, four or five into one?
Train, or, yeah, it's not easy work, right?
I mean, they're just across the board from us, but, yeah.
So anyway, so is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Um, all right, so consent agenda, I would like to, um, propose tabling the meeting minutes from the March fourteen meeting. The reason is, um, appreciate the streamlined, like, I think it's great to have just the topic and the vote and all that and maybe not get too much in the conversation. But it doesn't have who voted, what way.
It doesn't?
No, it just says the board voted to approve, so it doesn't have.
So you roll call the votes.
I, I, I think that's important just to have as a record, the roll call votes. So, I, I wouldn't want our minutes to not reflect that, I think that's just, should be a matter of the record to make sure we, we have those, those broken out.
Huh.
Even if it's just been a number, right?
Well, no, I think even, I, I, I think it should.
Like, hold on, let me pull it up, I'm just a little, uh, um, let me just see my, I'm sure I understand what you're saying, so.
Probably makes sense. So, on the meeting minutes, um.
Okay, let me just pull it up.
It says who made the motion, who seconded it, and it says the board approved or didn't, right? It doesn't break down the roll call of the votes.
Was there, was there roll call?
Well, I mean, no, we don't always do roll call, but we always in the past have said who voted for, you know, or at least the number of the vote. I know we've had the number, the vote was five to two.
Oh, I think what we said, I think what it is, we said, um, approved a unanimous vote of the board.
Right, or five to two, or whatever the, the vote breakdown was, and we always raise our hands, so. Anybody listening only to audio might not know, so maybe is that part of the problem, is that they're only getting the audio?
Well, this is what we were.
Is there at the school?
You were at the school then, okay.
Yeah, last month we were at the school, but.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure that we at least have the vote breakdown, I mean, my preference would be for, even though we, we never do an official roll call vote unless for those motions where we need that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we often have had in the minutes, even if we didn't do the official roll call, we've often had who voted what way. If we can't do that because that's not in the audio, then I understand, but at least the numbers. To the extent they can, I just think that's an important part of the record. Maybe the problem is we're giving them audio recordings and they're not, they wouldn't necessarily know if they're only listening to audio, who voted for what, 'cause we're not doing a roll call.
I think you're like, at a minimum, let's just say like, the motion passed.
Four one.
Four one, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. I mean, I think that's, that really needs to be there.
But if it's, but if it is roll call, it would be listed.
If it's roll call, it says that, but.
Okay.
Okay.
They're very least.
Let me go back and look, I, I'm trying to pull them up.
So we can, uh, the count on the votes.
I, I think that's important, you know?
Was there one that was, uh, there was some opposed and some?
It's so rare that that happens.
Was there one?
Well, we often have, I mean, we often have.
No, I don't know. Cause also.
We had that.
I, I've never.
Yeah, I mean, we often have those there, you know.
You do, yes, I usually do.
That divided.
Like, I'll say four to one or whatever, so, with so-and-so opposed or, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, I just think the extent we can get that in there, it's important to have that in the record.
I do think that's the way it's, like, four to one with so-and-so opposed or something.
It's always said. If there is, but if not, it's always said approved by unanimous vote of the board.
Right.
Okay, I'll go back through.
But I just, I abstain by default, so if you don't hear me say no, it's just kind of an extension and that's not reflected in here either.
Okay, I'll go back through and just, I'll, I guess I'll have to clarify which things you all, like, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it might be, we might have some back and forths to clarify votes, but.
Okay.
I'm just a little uncomfortable with having a record that vague on these things, just from a
Okay.
record point of view.
Okay.
All right, so I would move to table those.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
There we go. So if you were listening to that, you probably wouldn't have, all right. So, um, now we don't need to vote on the performance audit, there's no vote on that.
No, they just wanted you to have it. Um.
We're not voting to accept it, there's no motion, it's just audit.
Nope. And you know, should all have, um, a hard copy as well.
Yeah.
They provide it, and I think it was, and I also emailed it and put it in the, the meeting packet.
Okay. Also, so I just wanna mention, um, I guess for open more discussion, that, um, Ryan, uh, is not with us any longer, he is now off the board. His new replacement has been appointed and confirmed. We thought Ryan was gonna make it for today, but it's back and forth for everything, so he's not here today. Um, but Rajesh's new, uh, replacement, who is gonna be phenomenal, um, couldn't get all his paperwork and stuff through on time to be here today. 'Cause you know, you guys know the process, you get confirmed and you have to go turn in your paperwork and all that stuff. So, uh, he's gonna be here next month, so we'll have a new board member. I just wanted to say that Ryan has been an absolute pleasure to have on the board, I thought his contributions were, uh, always interesting and he contributed a ton.
A great man, a great addition.
Great, great board member and, um, and maybe to correct the record that was, um, perpetrated when he was nominated. Ryan and I were not personal friends before him coming on this board, we had lunch a couple of times, I got to know him. Uh, and we became friendly later through the work on the board, but, you know, these things get, get misrepresented out there in politics sometimes and, uh, I just thought, I met Ryan, uh, when I was doing leadership Greater Manchester presentation about education and he came up to me just out of the blue and started asking questions about the state board and how it worked and wanted to learn more and, um, said, hey, can, can we go to lunch? I wanna learn how it works, I'm super interested in education. And that's how, um, he got involved and we had a couple more lunches and the position opened up and there was this super smart guy who wanted to do a public service in some sort of way and so wound up getting a nomination and wondered being a great contributor to the board ad, so.
A good guy who knows a, a little bit about a lot of topics, right?
We always kid him about that, it's like, oh, here he goes again, he knows about water pipes. He knows about, you know, water systems. Like the kind of guy who dives into a subject, so he was just a voracious reader, a voracious learner. Came to every meeting prepared, knew his annotated questions for what he wanted to ask, just a very solid member of the board, so he missed. Um, but Rajesh is gonna be awesome, he's gonna be great. And Kate, this is, I'm not accepting that this is your last meeting, I'm just.
I don't know that it is, yeah.
It's like the fourth time I've heard.
We may make forums, yeah, exactly, like, don't, we're not taking that yet, so.
But just in case you're not back as a member, I can't say enough about what an amazing job you've done as a member of the board ad. Your contributions have been absolutely indispensable. I've learned so much from you and, um, charter school programs won't be the same without you on the board. So you're gonna, you know, maybe we'll just send you the packets anyway.
I was gonna say, can you just feed us prescriptions?
You just read the charter school packets.
Did you notice Drew kinda went over the, what are those questions, what are you doing? Drew, he was looking, he's all in yellow, you know, my questions, and, uh.
I didn't, I can't see your question, so, um, Kate, it's really, it's been, it's been awesome.
I love. Well, thank you, I've had a great time here, very good.
I'm not accepting this your last one, no.
Exactly. We may, I may need you.
I mean, just, that'll leave two open positions still on the board, no more on the other still.
We're trying, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to the governor and getting those nominations.
I thought it was hard to get to the local level to volunteer for something.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's all up to, up to the other side of the main street there, but, um, yeah. So we'll see how that goes, but thanks for your mentorship here and you taught me a lot and it's been great to have you.
Thank you.
And hopefully we'll see you guys live.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, anything else?
After we're done, I need to talk to you and then talk Frank.
Tim's like, come, I'm gonna be out here doing this.
Okay, enough of that, all right.
I have to say I'm impressed.
Better drive the Porsche there. That's pretty good, two thirty-four.
Pretty good.
Do you wanna move to adjourn?
We do.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
I think I've ever said that.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Just to let you know, Frank, they did, I've been asked.